Shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Como pensar educarla, como educar a un hijo. Y porque nosotros nunca, es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first time mom. I felt like a first time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you. Especially for first time parents, it can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 24th to order and invite the clerk to conduct roll call.
Supervisor McCordy?
Here.
Chair Mulhern?
Here.
Supervisor Hachek?
Here.
Supervisor Jody?
Here.
Supervisor Williams?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, with equal
Thank you. We will now move on to item number two, public expression. Public expression is the portion of the agenda that allows the public to speak for two to three minutes of any item of interest so long as that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. While members of the public are welcome to address the board under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from engaging in deliberation or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Any member of the board is welcome to add an agenda item to a future calendar by working with the chair and the clerk of the board. And if you wish to provide comment, please do come forward. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your telephone. If you could please state your name for the record, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Good morning, Board, County Staff. Adam Gasko, Redwood Valley resident. I am here this morning representing Mendo Matters. We are requesting that this board agendas discuss and vote to publicly support Proposition 36 at its earliest opportunity. Ten years ago, Prop 47 was passed with the intention to address prison overcrowding, adopt alternative sentencing methods, and reduce nonviolent offense incarcerations. While it has achieved some of these goals, it has inadvertently virtually decriminalized petty theft crimes and drug offenses. This has led to an increase in property theft and open drug misuse. Baggrency has reached such levels locally that many of us can no longer stand by quietly and continue to allow it to plague our once beautiful community. Proposition 36 would give law enforcement, prosecutors, and judges the ability to increase penalties for hard drug offenses while still having the option to offer treatment as an alternative by enacting a new class of crime called treatment mandated felonies. After Prop 47 was passed, theft under $950 was classified as a misdemeanor regardless of the number of offenses. Prop 36 would allow prosecutors to pursue felonies or repeat offenders. While the passage of Prop 36 won't magically make the blight disappear or immediately make our community safer, it is a much needed policy change that will empower law enforcement and the criminal justice system to help us move in that direction. Creating a public nuisance through theft or endangering public health through drug misuse should be considered criminal. We are fed up with a grime that has plagued many areas in our community and continues to spread. Help enable all local law enforcement by giving them the tools they need to keep our neighborhood safe. There are many programs available to those willing to get treatment. We must be more aggressive by insisting that those programs be utilized by those that suffer from addiction or suffer the consequences of incarceration. Allowing our fellow citizens to wallow in despair while in the throes of addiction, living on the street and squalor until they die of an overdose is inhumane. The passage of Prop 36 will give us a larger stick to make the carrot of treatment that much more attractive. Please add your voice to those that have already stood in support of Prop 36 and vote in favor of protecting our community. Thank you.
Supervisor Williams, do you have a question for the speaker?
Question for the chair. They asked for that item to be agendized. I would volunteer, but if it's already underway, I'll stand back.
There is not, to my knowledge, there is not currently an agenda item. So if you'd like to bring one forward, please.
Okay, I'll work with the speaker and bring it back.
Thank you.
Mark Dungin, self-healing practitioner and educator, working administrator, aka Goldilocks. Gratitude, appreciation. I have to look around and kind of for myself and for the system. But this time it's for Jackie Otis, Adult Protective Services, once again. And this time, again, it was for myself. I have an open case. There's a lot of things going on. Adam just addressed them. I'm a disabled person. Things happen to me that shouldn't happen. And yeah, Jackie's helping me out and I really appreciate that part of the system and it works for me. And I do have to use the system a lot, but don't think people use it enough. In fact, I think that's the main part of the, missing part of the problem of the system right now. I was just saying that out in the hallway is the people. It's not the people here. Everybody here is doing great as far as I can see. All, you know, what Adam just said, we need to do, it's obvious. You know, we need to increase these penalties for these crimes. We need to quit making the victims, you know, the perpetrators, which happens like 100% of the time. And I'm just dead tired of it to the point that, you know, I'm going to take my cases all the way to the hilt. And there's some people that don't understand that yet, but they will when they get there. And so that's my gratitude and appreciation is for warriors like Jackie, Jackie Otis of Adult Protective Services. And I've had my issues with her. And it's really funny because some of the issues I've had are the same things that are coming back and biting me in the butt right now. And so it's kind of funny what happens when you're a helper. People tend to come back and bite you. The last thing I want to say, and I don't want to get too out of line, is that there's a Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting tomorrow. And there's nothing on the agenda that discussing that's anything on the agenda today. And as far as I know, that's not the way it's supposed to happen. I just, you know, again, I don't want to get too into it. I missed my last meeting there, so I don't have a lot of right to say anything. Thankfully, it was made available to all of us this time in the way that they wanted it to happen in Covelo, not taking our host horse and ponies over there. But unfortunately, in that year's time, we've done nothing for you. I'm sorry.
Are there any more members of the audience that like to provide comment on public expression in the room? Seeing no one come forward and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, I'm going to move on to agenda item number three, the consent calendar. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established.
Do any board members have items they wish to pull for separate consideration? Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, for comment, 3J, 3K, 3P, 3S, and 3T.
Okay, please go ahead with your comment.
These are retroactive agreements. I wonder if there's a way for the board to cease this practice of retroactive agreements and get the agreements before us prior to vendors spending our money.
Supervisor Hachek?
Yeah, with item 3T, that it's a retroactive agreement. But, you know, I'm on the, I'm our representative to the area agency on aging. And there's certainly a slew of reasons why it's retroactive. It's a joint powers agreement with Lake County. And we had turnover at the top of the Department of Social Services. And so there's just a slew of reasons why this wasn't, this is coming to us now. So if Supervisor Williams wants to ask about those, you know, get more detail, we can certainly go into it later.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on any items that are on the consent calendar? Now is a good time to come forward and if you could name the item, that's helpful. Please go ahead and come forward in the audience. And if you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone.
Mark Dungin, self-healing practitioner and educator, working administrator, aka Goldilocks. Supervisor Williams, I believe it was S, 4S, the behavioral health money, the retroactive agreements. I just want to point out that I did ask about that. And I believe those are going to be kind of like the last ones, wrapping up. And what's on our, not on the consent calendar today is not retroactive. So I want to point that out and it looks like we're moving in the right direction. So I asked about that. And as far as my intent and focus for my future, that's where it's going, is to make sure that we get more input before these things happen. And again, the public could step forward. We'll find out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any additional commenters in the room. And I have no hands raised on Zoom, so Supervisor Hachek?
I'll move approval of the consent.
Thank you. Is it second by McCordy and vote by the button, please?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to item 4A of the regular calendar. Are there any department heads or elected officials that wish to come forward with a report at this time? Seeing no one come forward and having no hands raised on Zoom, we can move on to item 4B, a notice public hearing. Discussion of possible action including review of the performance of the Community Development Block Grant Agreement Number 20 CDBGPL 12010 for COVID-19 Business Assistance and Recovery Business Loan Fund Program. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established and all correspondence received have been sent to your emails.
Thank you. This time I'd like to open the public hearing and start with the staff presentation.
Good morning. Chair Mulhern, Board CEO, Antle, County Council Scott, Kelly Hansen, Executive Office Grants Unit. Today's public hearing is part of the final phase of administration for the county's COVID-19 Business Assistance and Recovery Loan Fund Program, which ran from June 4th, 2021 to June 3rd, 2024. As the grant has officially ended, this public hearing is required as part of the closeout process with the state. It also provides an opportunity to report out on progress, outcomes, and impacts of this grant funded project. In 2021, Mendocino County launched its Business Assistance and Recovery Loan Fund to provide flexible and low interest loans to small and medium sized businesses to offset the negative impacts of COVID-19 and assist businesses with the financial recovery and job retention and creation. The program is initially funded with $500,000 in county CDBG program income with $415,000 allocated for loans and $85,000 for program administration. The budget was amended in 2024 with an additional $263,278.05 in program income with $50,000 for loans and $213,278.05 for historical and current fiscal year PI loan servicing expenses. Funds were allocated to the project to provide flexible, low interest 1% loans to small and medium sized businesses in the county's unincorporated areas with provisions for loan balance forgiveness when small businesses met target job creation retention requirements. Three loans were given under this program. One to Happy Rides for $105,000, 1% interest for five years for the purchase of a non-medical transport van for the creation of three full time equivalent jobs. This loan was eligible for loan forgiveness if job requirements were met and payments were made for it 24 months. Cold Creek Compost also received a loan for $180,000 at 1% interest for 15 years for the consolidation of business equipment loans if they retained six full time equivalent jobs by December 31st, 2023. Geiger's Hopland Market also received $180,000, 1% loan for 10 years for purchasing inventory and working capital for the creation of, if they created six full time equivalent jobs by July 1st, 2024. It also did not have a forgiveness provision. The county worked with our subcontractor, Community Development Services, monitor compliance, ensuring businesses, these businesses met the job retention creation requirements. Documentations such as payroll and employee self certifications confirmed compliance with the loan terms and program requirements. Monitoring determined the grant funds helped create 12 jobs and retain 20 jobs, of which 24 jobs were held by the low moderate income group with eight employees above the moderate income level from Mendocino County. The county will continue loan servicing activities post closeout and will work with the state to complete the final reports and closeout packages.
Thank you. Are there any board members that have a question? Supervisor Jody?
So Kelly, thanks for the report. And I appreciate also the verbal additions you made here. And I know that the Geigers, which closed in the middle of July, my understanding is they stopped making payments on the loan. What specifically is the county, whether it's County Council or whoever, going to do to try to recover the remainder of that loan?
We are currently working with CDS, our contractor, and sending letters and reaching out on a regular basis. And we are working with County Council on that item. And I believe we have some folks on the line that can provide further details if you require them.
Okay. It's just in part because the county is ramping up this program. And I have great hopes that this will be a successful program for the county and there'll be more business loans and money coming back in the business loans. It just seems like this could be a learning experience from the Geiger's loan. You know, what happened here, what the county is doing to respond and just be as prepared as possible for future loans. So yeah, if there was someone online that could explain a little more about what the county is lacking, that'd be great.
Kelly, whom would you like to be brought over online?
I believe we have CDS on the line, Deb or Jeff.
Debra Schwartz or? And then also, I would just say, the Economic Development Finance Corporation does many, many business loans and does sometimes have to work with businesses to get repayment. And so they are also probably a really great resource for the department as you move forward with trying to issue these loans.
Yep. They sat on the loan committee to help us decide who would.
Okay. It doesn't, I'm not sure Supervisor Jody, it doesn't seem as this person is raising their hand to move over. You just wanted to make sure we are following up about that particular business?
Yeah. And just, I'm sure there'll be something learned from this experience that will better prepare the county for future loans to make sure that the county is paid back. I realize that inherently, these are more risky loans than conventional bank loans. That's why these people are getting a loan from the government rather than from the bank. It's also they're getting a loan at a lower interest rate, which helps out the business. So it's just that, you know, as the county gets more experienced with this loan program and is more active with it, I have hopes that the county will take prudent steps to get the loan secured with real property or other assets to ensure the county is repaid.
The loan is secured against the real assets of the business as well as a personal guarantee of the three owners. It is our hope that when the business sells, which it is up for sale right now, that we are repaid by the time of sale.
It seems as though Debra's been able to be moved over into the meeting. Debra, did you want to provide comment for Supervisor Jody about the collection of the debt for the business that's closed?
Yes, actually Jeff Lucas is here with me and he will comment.
Great, thank you.
In regards to Geiger's, as mentioned earlier, I think the loan is properly secured. And in regards to contacting the borrower, we have sent letters, certified letters regarding the fact that they are in default. And then I've also attempted on two occasions to contact them. They have not returned my calls. Oftentimes, a mix of the formal outreach and notice of default, which is a requirement of the program, combined with contact via phone can help. Our goal is always to attempt to get the repayment made to the jurisdiction. And in this case, the folks have not responded. And even though the county is secured, we're going to continue to pursue the repayment. And I think at this time, county staff is pursuing engagement with an attorney who has worked on these kind of loans in the past, if it gets to that point. Now, I'm going to make another call today to see if they'll get back to us. Hopefully they will, because it's always better to have a plan in place to accommodate the borrower when necessary. But in this case, we have taken care of, I think, the requirements of the program in regards to getting repaid. And it may be, it may be a combination of those two things will work. So that's where we're at with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lucas, for coming into the meeting. And thank you, Kelly, for the presentation. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward and I have no hands raised online, Supervisor Hachek?
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote by the button, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'm reading the room here and I think I'd like to go back to item 4A. If there are any elected officials or members from departments that wish to provide an update to the board? Good morning.
I'm sorry I'm late. You finished with public comment faster than you usually do. So I'm here to let you know about our discoveries. And one thing I want for the assessors office, I'm Katrina Bartlamay, Assessor, County Clerk, Recorder, Registrar of Voters. Our discoveries, we now have three real property appraiser techs. And they have been going throughout the county and randomly picking areas within the county to look at GIS to make sure we have the structures on that property being assessed. So, and the reason they do that is so they don't bog down, you know, just the coast for that appraiser. They don't bog down just the Willets area for that appraiser. So they're randomly doing that. In August, our techs reviewed 1,087 parcels, which brought our total parcels reviewed to 3706. They sent out additional, an additional 29 discovery letters. We have 33 additional assessments pending. We discovered eight structures that weren't being assessed properly, mainly sheds, miscellaneous improvements, which are pools, porch covers, et cetera, bringing an assessed value to the tax roll, and that's just an assessed value of about $289,000. In August, our techs viewed an additional 378 properties, not problems, with 26 discover letters sent out. Most discoveries were the miscellaneous improvements of small storage sheds, carports, and decks, although they did find two single family residences, some cabins and a shop that totaled an assessed value of $703,000 in assessed value. This brings our discoveries up to just under $5 million in assessed value. So that's pretty cool. Our amnesty program in August, there were four amnesty permits taken out in August. They were a single family residence that we were already assessing, a metal building built in 2022 that we did not have, a yurt and miscellaneous outbuildings had permits from previous owner and reissued to the new owner and now is a transfer. So we would have gotten those on the transfer. And some storage buildings. In August, we got three amnesty permits for September. There was a Class K, 4,000 square foot, single family residence that we were already assessing and a 400 square foot addition with a conversion from a carport to a garage that we were not assessing on that same parcel. We've completed 556 supplemental notices on transfers and new constructions in August and 298 in September. We have been working on transfer and completion of construction, concentrating on the years 2021, 2022, and 2023. Elections, we're in full swing of our presidential general election. Our military and overseas ballots went out last week. We've got candidate statements and the measures, the local measures on our website and sent to those districts or cities.
Any questions? Yeah, I believe Supervisor Hachek has a question. Hi, John.
Good morning. With the amnesty program, you know, my understanding there is a window. And so the window, I forget the months, but it's going to close at some point. So do you remember when it closes or?
I don't.
That might be a planning and building.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to let people know that there is a window that is going to close.
Yeah, and they should contact planning and building for that. Because then planning and building will help them and then send it on to us.
Right. Thank you. And I wanted to appreciate you for your outreach to outlying communities to get their candidates, to facilitate that process for candidacy.
Well, they actually contacted me. That's, I guess, the proper way to do it. So I went to the South Coast and one day, and I went up to Covelo the next week. And we had at least 10 candidates each day. So that was nice.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be late.
Yeah, no problem at all. Okay. Any other internal updates?
Good morning. My name is Michael Jones. I'm the University of California Cooperative Extension Force Advisor for Mendocino County. I just want a quick update. We've been following and have presented before about the risks of Mediterranean oak borer, which I confirmed is present in the county a few weeks ago. I don't really know what that means at this point. I suppose I will start an outreach campaign with some workshops for professional tree care workers as well as the community to try to do some education. From a management perspective, there's no state quarantine or regulations or any kind of restrictions around material. But best management practices at this point is, you know, really being conscientious about moving infested material and destroying infested trees. Confirmation was in Hopland, then I found trees. The preferred host of this insect is the white oak, so value oak, excuse me, value oak, blue oak, and Oregon white oak. Confirmed infestations, Hopland along the 101 corridor south of Ukiah and in Potter Valley is pretty heavily infested. So we have a pest alert. I'll leave a couple of these for the audience on the desk. I sent- I sent Glenn and a couple of you the pest alert as well and an email. And then we have the website mobpc.org for all the information we have on this pest. But if you have questions, follow up with me. We're going to, we're working on the research for control and management and kind of understanding the risks. Certainly going to be a huge challenge in urban spaces where value oaks are important urban forest trees. And, you know, it's a pretty rapid killer of large value oaks, so it's going to be a pretty challenging condition or issue to deal with moving forward. Any questions?
Thank you. It seems as though Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Hachak have questions for you.
Yeah.
Supervisor McGordy.
So looking at this pest, how would you assess it? Is it virulent? Is it going after damaged or weak trees? Or where is it on the scale of aggressiveness?
Yeah, that's a really, a really good question. We're still trying to tease that out. At this point, it appears to be a pest of stressed trees. So it's kind of taking advantage, we call it a secondary pest, where it's taking advantage of already heavily stressed trees. The problem with that is most of our urban trees are heavily stressed. And then because of drought, fire, and other things, we're seeing kind of widespread landscape scale, the stress and oaks in particular, and it's popping up in a lot of different systems. You know, and it's a different challenge, management challenge. In the urban spaces where large value oak are high value for the aesthetics, for their property value and recreation, they present huge hazards and because the limbs break and the trees are going to die and some risks. In the wildland spaces, it's more like ecological consideration. So it varies depending on what trees you're talking about and what your kind of management goals and objectives are.
And just following up on that too. So do you, do we see it in young trees that are actively growing? Or is it more, more older trees that?
We see it in older, kind of the old decadent value oaks, the ones that we all love. We see in younger trees that are stressed, so drought stressed or fire stressed. We're still, I mean, we've only just, we detected this insect three years ago and we're still really trying to understand its potential impact.
Thank you Supervisor Hachak.
Thank you for that report. You know, we, the information shows that we had like 1.3 million dead trees in Mendocino County and this will add to that problem. Do you think that this is accelerated because of the drought we had or climate change or? And what is the tendency to move towards other types of trees, the conifers and such?
So this particular pest is host specific to the white section of oaks and value oak is its preferred host tree. In Oregon, where it's also been introduced, Oregon white oak is its preferred host. So it kind of shifts within that white section based on the availability of host material. It's not going to cross over to conifers. It's an ambrosia beetle, which is like a really tiny version of a bark beetle. But it's not going to have the same, because hardwoods have a little bit of a different defense mechanism than conifers, we're not going to see the same kind of exponential growth and increase in mortality that we see with conifers, kind of rapidly following drought or fire where we see explosions in bark beetle populations and extensive decline in mortality. This is going to kind of be a buckshot mortality event where we're going to see clusters of trees dying across the landscape at different rates and at different concentrations and at different numbers. So it's going to not be kind of a pulse mortality event, but more of like a continuous decline and, you know, new trees will keep dying every year, pretty much moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other departments that wish to provide a report at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I am going to move on to item number 4C. Discussion on possible action including approval of agreements with Anchor Health Management Medication Support Services, Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center, Mendocino County Youth Project, Redwood Community Services, Tapestry Family Services to provide specialty mental health services to eligible Medi-Cal beneficiaries of Mendocino County. We have a department coming forward to present, so we'll let them get set up. Great.
All right, good morning. Dr. Janine Miller, Health Services Director, and I am here to talk about the special mental health contracts for this next fiscal year. As noted on, on the, noted that we're looking to contract with Anchor Health Management, Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center, Mendocino Health Youth Project, Redwood Community Service, and Tapestry Family Services. We came before this board at the end of June, I believe it was, and did a presentation from the RFP committee who voted on those agencies through the RFP results to move forward with these contracts. I have two members of the RFP committee here with me today and some members online should there be questions again about that RFP. The, this is a nine-month contract. If you remember, we went ahead and extended the fiscal year 2324 contract by three months. So what you're looking is, is October 1st through June 30th of 2025. And so what you're seeing, when you look at those numbers, those are for nine months. I just want to make sure because when we look at total number of clients served, that might be higher if you added in the full 12 months and the cost per beneficiary would be higher if you were looking at a full 12-month contract. So I just wanted to make sure that I noted that. On the next slide, prior, we went ahead and sort of showed what it looked like by agency for the overall result of kind of the system in 2324. This slide lets you know that there was 873 people that entered services in fiscal year 2324. On top of those, they were already serving. The number of people that they were serving that utilized crisis was only 9%. You can see the number of people that had utilized crisis service prior, the prior year, and then in 2324 that didn't utilize services was 112. That means that 91% of the people serving, being served by the special mental health services did not need crisis services in fiscal year 2324. It also notes a decline in the number of people that needed to be conserved across two years. In fiscal year 2223, there were 29 individuals that ended up in conservatorship versus the six that ended up in conservatorship in 2324. It shows the number of people who got off conservatorship, six individuals got off conservatorship. We were able to house 46 individuals and of those housed 30, 30 individuals maintained their housing. And that's for the whole, looking at the whole systems, the whole special mental health system. This year's contracts, I wanted to look at sort of what we will continue to track on the data reporting. We'll continue to track everything we've been tracking, which is number of individuals housed, housed versus unhoused, beneficiaries accessing services. So who are the new beneficiaries coming in? We always look at how many beneficiaries overall, number of service provided. We also look at the type of services provided and the, who's providing those services, number of beneficiaries who have completed treatment and not returned, a successful step down and were able to maintain a lower level of cares. We're looking at number of beneficiaries currently accessing crisis services. So we want to look at how many beneficiaries needed crisis services that we were serving and then how many beneficiaries needed crisis services the last year that actually were able to maintain and stay out of crisis this next year. We're also making sure that we look at some outcome measurements that we've continued to use across the system, but we added a couple for all the agencies. So we'll have consistency with them using all the same outcome measurement systems this next fiscal year. And then we always like to look at the number of beneficiaries that are needing higher level of care. We really want to keep people out of LP, off LPS conservatorship, best practice to keep them in their community and treat them local. So we're always tracking that number to see, are we able to keep people off of LPS? Next, we are looking at implementing a new outcome and data tool. This is called a Behavioral Health Analytic Platform Tool. This tool looks at, is connected to our electronic health record. It will be able to pull a lot of different data. It can look at high-risk dashboards, provider dashboards, clinician dashboards. It can pull data per client, per clinician, per agency. It will actually track how a client is progressing over time, whether or not their services are decreasing, increasing, how they're scoring on the different metrics that we have out there, like the CANS, ANZA, A Scores GAD. And so this is a full picture of any client on any day. We can pull up and see how they're doing in addition to how the clinicians are doing or the agency is performing as a whole. I wanted to touch a little bit before I move on to my last thing on, every time we present for specialty mental health, the crew team always comes up. It seems to be a consistent conversation with specialty mental health and crew. There was some discussion at the last boarding regarding crew statistics, so I wanted to make sure I added those in. In 2024, they have touched 361 individuals. They have served long-term clients 24 to date. They provided some stats on their decrease in number of homelessness calls their law enforcement has needed to do. They divided it by three months, but I'll just note that in April, they saw a 13.16% decrease and in August, they saw a 25.81% decrease. They also looked at what their savings were over time. I do have this document, if anyone would like a copy of it. I will note that from the behavioral health side, we did remove some of the client data. I'm sure that Fort Bragg PD would be happy to share that, but we never give out client data because we're worried someone could be identified. But we're happy to share the statistics they provided us if anyone would like to see those. I'm going to say, since crew is a law enforcement model and homeless focus, I'm going to recommend that if people have questions, they direct those to Sheriff Kendall. And I will note that we do have two meeting schedules. There was a conversation at the last board meeting about whether, about meeting. We have two meetings scheduled in the month of October, early October and end of October to meet with Social Services, Behavioral Health, and the sheriff to talk about what that would look like potentially in the county. Lastly, I want to focus on something we all, we always ask, what's the cost per beneficiary? And it seems to be that people forget that mental health is a chronic condition. Serious mental illness is a chronic condition. People just don't take medication or get hospitalized and get cured. It's a chronic condition, just like any other medical condition out there. And so I thought something different would be to look at what do chronic medical conditions cost us annually per client? We're always so worried about, you know, are we spending too much on mental illness? But what about other diseases? So I looked at our total cost per beneficiary in Mendocino County for all of the mental health system and our average cost per beneficiary is $14,839. I then looked at an average of what is the average cost per beneficiary for just major depression? And we serve all levels of, of mental illness, not just major depression, right? We serve bipolar, schizophrenia, but the average cost is $10,836 and that's just for major depression. Then I looked at chronic kidney disease with no dialysis needed. If someone has chronic kidney disease, they don't need dialysis. And this information was through PubMed Central, $14,634. When we look at the annual cost for epilepsy, $11,354 per person per year. Then if we look at diabetes, the average cost per person, this comes from the American Diabetes Association, $19,736 per person per year to treat diabetes. So I think in Mendocino County, our average cost to treat our beneficiaries are within, pretty similar to those to treat other chronic health conditions across the United States and across what we're going to see in health conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the contracts. And also I think some of the providers are here that may have some additional information to provide.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
So on July 23rd, the board passed a motion. Board, it was the second. And honestly. And direct. Performance. Methodology prior to contract approval. So I think the tools being described look like they are useful for clinicians, probably for staff, but the, the direction in that motion was a performance review methodology so that the board could review these contracts going forward. I think there's a bit of a gap between what's being presented and completion of, of this directive. So I'm curious what the board's thoughts are. Would now be a time maybe to approve the recommended action today, but tie it to a performance review by an independent outside auditor?
Well Supervisor Williams, when I reviewed the documents that were attached to our agenda and the data that was been, was provided and has been provided, I'm not, and along with the new data system that will be presenting more information than we've previously had, I'm not sure exactly which, what you, data you would like to see.
I'm not asking for data. I'm asking for an independent performance review to tell us dollar for dollar how we're doing compared to a benchmark. And it may be that we're the best in the state and maybe there's room for improvement. But if we don't get that feedback loop going, we're not going to improve the system. So I'm not asking for specific data. I saw, I read all the attachments. I'm saying that, what, here's a question for the board. What's the date of the last independent performance review of the, of these services?
I believe that all of our services are regularly audited and I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to. So I don't have a date in front of me, but I know that all of our services and specifically for mental health are audited regularly. Dr. Miller, do you, I'm not prepared to offer a date at this time, but I know that they are audited.
So I don't know that this will get to what Supervisor Williams is asking, but once a year, the external quality review comes in and looks at our contracts and our providers in detail from a quality review. Every three years, Department of Healthcare Services comes in and does a full analysis of the system and that includes looking at our contractors, all their documentation, their billing, their charts, and that happens every three years.
Okay. Supervisor Williams, does that answer your question or?
I'm, it doesn't satisfy my concern. I'm not looking for that audit. I'm looking for an independent performance review because this board or whatever board sits here is approving contracts that total tens of millions of dollars annually. And as one supervisor, I can tell you there's not enough information provided to know if we're successful, if we're doing a good job, what the areas are where we need to improve. So it becomes emotional, right? We're voting, voting based on emotions. Do we like the provider? Do we, you know, do we like the presentation staff is providing? They may be doing their parts. They may be completely competent. It may be best in the state, quality performance. This board has no way to analyze it. And I'm sure there must be some areas where we could improve. I couldn't tell you what those are from the data that's been provided. And so I'm asking for this board to support an outside entity to do a performance review and tell us what's working well, what areas we need to improve.
Okay. I have pins by Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Jody? Supervisor McGordy?
So, so this is so difficult in terms of assessment and, you know, I appreciate the data that's being brought forth by Dr. Miller and the amount of money we're spending. Mental illness is so different from other diseases because it's episodic and trying to figure out, have you cured somebody? Probably not. What you're doing is you're managing a condition which requires follow-up and, you know, dedication and hats off to everybody who works in your department because it's not an easy job. And you think you make progress and then all of a sudden it seems like you lost everything you accomplished. I agree with Supervisor Williams that we, we probably need to have some reassurance for the amount of money that we spend, which is huge. And we've been working with the same contractor over time, which means that there's a good, a good relationship, a good working relationship between the department and the contractor. Having assurance that we're getting a value for our money is something that we were always concerned about. And I think that, that any department head who spends money recognizes this is the public's money and they're going to want to go along with that. So I, you know, I would like to move forward to this, but I'm not sure. We have the audit, which is really important. That is meaningful when the state comes in and looks at the books. I'm not sure who else could come in and tell us, you know, because my take on the mental health industry is that it's, it's not like people who work with oncology or some of the other diseases. It's very difficult to look at outcomes and know whether you've succeeded, if you've made progress, or are you still in the same place? So while I support that, I'm not sure who would do it. I think it would be worth having a discussion with Dr. Miller and her staff about how could we do this so that we're reassured? That would be my suggestion.
I have, I guess maybe a question and I do want to get to Supervisor Jody, but Supervisor Williams, in the past, we've seen comparisons of other counties and how many people they're serving and their dollar amount. Is that what you're looking for?
No, the data that I've seen is how many are served and how much we've spent, but it doesn't touch on, are we successful? Are we providing the best service for the available funds?
Okay.
For example, if I were a patient in the- How, for example, if I were a patient in this county versus a patient in Marin, would I receive comparable level of care? I can't answer that.
Okay.
And so I'm voting on contracts where I don't, I don't know. I need some, as Supervisor McGordy said, it's so complicated, it's so nuanced. I don't think you can expect a county supervisor to be able to derive the level of care out of the data that's being presented. I think we need someone who has specialty in this field, who knows other counties, knows how the state is doing, how the nation is performing, to tell us what's going well here and where we need to improve.
Okay.
I mean, is that, you know, if it were, if it were the roads, I would bring in a road expert to tell us. If it's the finances, I would bring in a financial auditor. This is an area where you have county supervisors not trained in the subject about to spend tens of millions of dollars. And I guess I, I see no accountability on our part. And staff's doing a great job. The providers are probably doing a good job. This board is not exemplifying accountability, which isn't our strategic plan. So I'm asking for some movement in that direction of gaining accountability so we can tell the public. We had somebody look at the performance and they said, this is why an approval of future contracts is justified. Here's some changes you might want to consider. I have nothing like that to go on.
Okay. It seems like that might actually become an entirely different agenda item. So let's go to Supervisor Jurdie and Supervisor Hashak with questions on the contracts, the five individual contracts before us.
What I heard Supervisor Williams say was supporting approving the contracts today, but giving direction to staff to bring something back at a later time. And I think that's a discussion worth having. I don't know who that expert is out there. I'm sure they do exist to look at other counties. I, I have a feeling that when we look at what they're doing in Fort Bragg with the police department, with professional, exactly what you would say, they're, they're non-law enforcement officers, but working for the police department. That integration with the police department, I think, is a successful model, and, and I think that any evaluation of mental health services in Mendocino County should include not just the mental health providers, but, but the, the integration or lack of integration between the mental health providers and law enforcement in the county. So that would be the sheriff's office, UCAEPD, Willets PD, Fort Bragg PD. I think what we're seeing in Fort Bragg PD is their strong integration. There's less evidence that there's strong integration with the sheriff's office, with UCAEPD, Willets PD at this point. And so I think an outside evaluation would be helpful, but I think it should also look at, to what extent are these services integrating successfully with the other law enforcement agencies in the county? Because I think ultimately to have a very successful program, there needs to be strong integration with law enforcement.
So I just, on that point, would like to add that UCAEP police department works very well with the county crisis team, and they noted that in their annual report. So I think that there's a, maybe a misunderstanding about the, the calls in the different jurisdictions, and that certainly is worthy of an agenda item. And I think I hope to incorporate some of that clarification in the agenda item I plan to bring forward in November with the sheriff and behavioral health and social services to clarify whom exactly is doing what and how, how it all is working together and to hopefully find some of the gaps. So I think that's another future agenda item. Supervisor Hashak?
Yeah, just a question for Dr. Miller is that with the request for proposal committee that, you know, selected these, you have behavioral health, probation, sheriffs and social services departments or offices represented. So I was just wondering how many people are actually on that? And do you think that that, it certainly seems like that represents a broad spectrum of, you know, oversight of these services?
I think there were 10 individuals that were part of the RFP review committee. And I think that they did go through, they did make sure that the providers were meeting all of the Medi-Cal and State of California contract requirements for behavioral health and providing those services.
And were there multiple applications for these services? Or are we down to, you know, one provider and they get it?
So no, we had eight individual, we had eight companies that applied. Three of them were more looking for the mental health services act side of the house, and this was a Medi-Cal side of the house. So we had five individuals that actually met the requirement for Medi-Cal. Every contractor, there's not one contractor. There are five different contractors. They all provide pretty much similar services, right? So sometimes they serve different age groups. Sometimes they all serve the same age group. So it's not just one provider. There's five different agencies. They all own, they're all, they're all nonprofits, have their own boards. Several of them have been in business for 20-plus years, have contracted with the county before we had the ASO model and are now contracting with the county after the ASO model. As we know, the ASO model went away completely at, as of June 30th of 2024, and so now everything is 100% within the county. But they're all provide, and they all had to show that they have a history of providing and can provide all levels of care. So they don't just provide one service. They provide to whichever age population they want, case management, rehab, therapy. The only provider that sort of does, has a specialty is anchor who does medication management. And as I noted during the RFP presentation, we also have Indigenous Wellness Alliance that's coming on board. Diana Billy Elliott was here talking about them with a native focus. Their contracts are in work, and so that'll be a new provider coming in to really focus on the native population, but also will be willing to serve anybody. We're working with a center point to bring in detox and residential for dual diagnosis. And we have an individual psychiatrist that we're working on a contract with to do pediatric psychiatry in Mendocino County. So that's another contractor that's on her own. So they're all individual contracts. They're not lumped in one. There's no ASO. They aren't connected. They all own their own businesses, they're all operating their own companies.
And I guess that with the, the comment about, you know, if we're looking at roads, we'd bring in an expert on roads, you know, kind of with the analogy to this, this situation. You know, we do have an expert on roads and that's Howard DeShiel, you know, our director of transportation. We do have an expert on these issues and that's you, Dr. Miller. That's why we've hired you to, to oversee all of these. And so I guess with, with these departments and a lot of people on the RFP committee, you know, I'm hoping that we're getting the best product and we, you know, it's a certain point, we have to rely on your expertise to, to guide it to.
I would also add, we did have Lee Kemper come in and do that report for Measure B where he looked at the whole system. He looked at the mental health side of the house and the Measure B, and the substance use side of the house and made recommendations of where we were doing well in mental health and where he saw rooms for improvement. I think he did that report in 20, I don't want to say wrong, 18, 19, and that's where Measure B worked on to improve some stuff. So I just wanted to note that that was an outside, independent individual that came in to kind of look at the system and care too.
Thank you. Supervisor Jurdie and then Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. I do think that we are getting as a board more information than we've ever had in the past, and that there is documentation that there is both quality services and that, and that there are results. I guess where I'm, I'm going though is it looks to, it seems to me that from the public's perception, there are a number of issues that really span beyond this one department or even these individual providers, and they do include law enforcement. And so I think it, as Supervisor Williams said, there is always room for improvement, even from the very best programs. And I think it would be beneficial for the community if there was someone with expertise looking at the entirety of, of what's going on in Mendocino County, including law enforcement, including behavioral health, including the contractors, including people who aren't even on this list, who are providing, you know, soup kitchens and whatnot that are, that are sustaining people who are, at least at the moment, living in Mendocino County and, and maybe behaving in a way in public that is disruptive to the community. And, and I think the public would just like to see a little less of that disruption in their downtowns, in their neighborhoods. And that may take a more global approach to these services and, and actually beyond these services. So again, I think there's, there's benefit from having some outside eyes brought in and I would look at it beyond county services, beyond county vendors, and looking at better coordination if it's, if it's possible with the cities and other, other nonprofits in the community.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, Supervisor Hascheck. When we look at roads, we can look at the PCI index. The state has a survey of all roads statewide, so we have some objective data and we can, we're not the ones out there analyzing the roads, but we're looking at culmination of data in summary and deciding we're moving in a direction. It may not be the direction we want, but at least we know where we're headed. I don't see that for these types of services. I think that's what I'm asking for. And then for Supervisor Jurdie, if he would make a motion, I think he's heading in a direction that, that I could support. I couldn't support the recommended action, but with the additions he's talking about, I think we could, we could have a consensus today.
Okay. Supervisor Jurdie?
Well, question for other board members. I think there probably should be some kind of process. I'm looking to the CEO for some feedback. You know, how, it seems to me there would probably be some sort of process for identifying, you know, an outside expert. I don't know that any one of us of the five happen to know. Dr. Miller has someone that she recall quickly, but it just seems to me there should probably be some kind of process for identifying an outside expert on this area that then would be brought back at a later time for a contract approval, et cetera. So any thoughts on a process for identifying who that entity would be?
CEO Antle?
Certainly. Thank you, through the chair. I think we can talk about the process, but I'm hearing a lot of things from the board right now. And when we spoke at the last meeting, we spoke about the two meetings that the sheriff, the executive office, behavioral health and social services would be having. Those two working meetings, brainstorming meetings are happening in October, and I know we're waiting for some possible legislation change come November, and we're moving forward on all those items. And when I, when you're talking homelessness, I'm talking the whole spectrum of that, including the sheriff's office and public safety. So we'd want to include those. But in that last meeting, we talked about holding an open forum, a workshop. So we got input and we received input from the community as well. And now I'm hearing that you would like somebody from the outside, I believe, to come in and do a full audit on all the resources that we put forward to it, including public defender, sheriff's office, probation, behavioral health, all those different areas, because that does touch all those folks that are out, that are utilizing services.
Well, in addition to that, Supervisor Jurdie, I also heard that you want more clarification or information on agencies that don't receive county funding in order to really figure out how the whole system is working. And I think that this is a, a really big conversation and I think, I think it's worthy of some time and consideration and an agenda item to be brought forward if we really want to look at the entire system beyond what the county's doing, beyond the RFPs for the specific specialty mental health services that we have on the agenda today. Supervisor Williams?
I'm not looking for a performance review of the sheriff's office. Just, I don't think we should go there. That's the sheriff's, he's elected, that's his, his job to work on performance in his department. But I think we have a problem in that the public is showing up time and time again telling us that they're not happy with the results that they see on the street, they see in their communities. And so far, this board has told the public, well, you're wrong, and here we have some data, and you know, you should be happy, hoping that the public will stop raising concern. I don't think that concern will cease. I think it will escalate. And so I think the starting point is to recognize there is a problem. We should get an outside source to look at holistically how we're solving these types of problems, what the shortcomings are, where we could do better, report back, and then the board can decide on next steps. Maybe it's a shift in funding. Maybe it's the reality in California, this is the best we can do today. But I don't think it's right to tell the public that they're wrong about the concerns they're raising.
Well, just for clarification, Supervisor Williams, I don't believe that I've ever told the public that they're wrong, and they have plenty of reasons to be concerned. Again, this agenda item is specifically for specialty mental health service contracts based on the RFP that went out and the respondent. So I'd like to open it up for public comment at this time.
Mark Donigan, South Fealing practitioner and educator, or Dean Minister A. Holdelox. First of all, as I pointed out, the behavioral health advisory board is supposed to make the recommendation to this board prior to these contracts. I have no problem with this one because I believe in Janine Miller, and I believe that we'll get to the proper process someday. But there are metrics for progress in behavioral health here that are not being considered at all. We get plenty of numbers, as you all know, almost to the specific individuals. What we don't have, and we continue to be told that we do have, is continuum of care. And that's why we've got to wait till October for the meeting with the sheriff, because that's all important. He's taking care of probably a third of our people. The other third are out running rampant, and I'm hoping the other third are in treatment. But again, when we're looking for treatment outcomes, we're looking for these people not being in jail, and we don't know if we're getting these outcomes until we get all these people coordinated and talking together. So, you know, like the sheriff doesn't know HIPAA, all these things are, are stopping us. The AVA can't print the people's picture in a paper anymore, the Daily Catch. How do we know who's who? I mean, these things need to be resolved. So there are metrics that aren't being used. They're very simple ones when you're looking at specific individuals, and we're at that point where we need to be doing that, looking at specific individuals, because people are killing each other out there and we're not stopping them. And we know who they are before it happens. And sheriff knows how to stop this. We need maybe to listen a little more to him and believe in our director. Give things time to shake out, and if you have a specific person or problem, bring them forward.
Supervisor Williams, did you have a question for the speaker?
Question for the speaker. Do you have any financial interest in the outcome of this item today?
Absolutely none.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. CEO, County Council, Victoria Kelly with Redwood Community Services. I wanted to speak to a couple of comments and things that have been discussed in terms of our system of care quality metrics audits. Annually, our system of care goes through an external quality review by EQRO, which the acronym is actually External Quality Review Organization for all Medi-Cal beneficiaries in the state of California. That's an independent review committee that reviews counties from a quality perspective, and this is what our county utilizes to identify our PIPS, our performance improvement plans, which all of us as organizational providers participate in. That review committee looks at systems, our outcomes, our EHR utilization, uses key informant interviews to develop a annual report. We also go through county audits. They do not just look at our fiscal picture, but they look at our outcomes and our processes as well. And the system goes through tri-annual audits by DCHS every three years. Additionally, RCS has a number of programs that are both certified and licensed by the state, either Community Care Licensing and/or Department of Healthcare Services. And annually, we go through our own internal audits with DCHS and CCL, and those audits do also include quality metrics and outcomes. Lastly, I want to speak to RCS is a nationally accredited organization. That means we are reviewed and accredited by a national body that reviews us based on national standards of care in all of our programs. Every single one of our programs goes through this, and we've been accredited for, I believe, over eight years, and we go through a reaccreditation every three years. Last year, RCS passed our reaccreditation with, in all of our standards. That means over 1,600 standards of care in our programs. That means over 1,600 standards of care in our programs with zero findings. I'm not saying that we didn't have areas that we internally identified as improvement plans. We have our own internal improvement plans. But as a system of care, we go through rigorous oversight, audits, quality metrics, standards that we have to adhere to. And we do that consistently and as a unit and internally independently within our own organizations. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more context to all the areas that we are looked at and adhere to throughout, throughout our services.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams has a question?
Yeah, a question for the presenter, speaker. Do you have any financial interest in the outcome of this item today?
RCS is a county contractor, yes.
That's a yes, thank you.
Are there any members that wish to come forward to speak to this item? If you can sort of stand for a line, if you're able, it helps me see how many people want to speak. And if you're on Zoom, you could use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning Supervisors and CEO Antle. My name is Kendra Palmer. I'm the Executive Director of Tapestry Family Services. I wanted to come up and introduce myself. Many of you I have not met. A few of you I have in the past. I also wanted to follow up with something that Dr. Miller had talked about a little bit earlier, about how we are separate agencies. And I just want to give a little bit of background on that. So Tapestry has been around for over 20 years. Started in 2000. At that time, we were a foster family agency, and we did start providing specialty mental health services for children, and we've expanded over the years. We do have things that make us more specialized, as well as the other agencies. I know that everybody has their special programs that they use. I just wanted to reaffirm that it's a different agency. We have, we have our own board that governs our decisions. And, and I wanted to talk about two things that we do that are kind of specialized in our community, and that is parent-child interactive therapy. We have several clinicians that offer that in the community. It's a very helpful, it's a very helpful tactic for working with children, where a clinician works closely with a parent as they're interacting with their child. The second thing that I want to talk about is that we, we actively go out to different areas in our community. We have a licensed clinician that is present in Coblo, in Leightonville, and rehab providers that go out into those communities and the other smaller, more rural areas throughout the week. And so we have presence in Leggett. Over the years, we've had presence in Will Gulch, a variety of areas. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information about that. And I do have a financial interest.
Thank you. I didn't mean to ask. But also, I want to thank you for going out to those outlying communities.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, CEO Antle, County Council Scott, Chair Mueller, and then the rest of the board. Thank you for us opportunity to speak with you. My name's Dan Anderson. I'm with Anchor Health Management. And to your question, yes, we are one of the contracted folks that are on, on this agenda item. I did, I would like to read a brief statement that I prepared, and I do have copies for the board if, if you're interested. And I wanted to talk just a little bit about kind of the history here of Anchor Health Redwood Quality Management Company was established in July of 2013. Following a successful proposal to the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, RQM-C took on the responsibility of overseeing the delivery of specialty mental health services for the children and youth of Mendocino County. In 2016, at the Board of Supervisors' request, RQM-C broadened its scope of work to include the delivery of children's medication management services and overseeing the adult mental health system of care. In 2018, again at the request of Mendocino County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, RQM-C took on the responsibility for providing adult medication management services for specialty mental health beneficiaries. In 2022, due to the new CalAim provisions, a change in risk management policies, and fiscal decisions, a decision was made to discontinue the administrative services role of RQM-C. This decision was made by the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors with the full support and agreement of both Mendocino County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and Redwood Quality Management Company. RQM-C, now known as Anchor Health Management, continues to provide psychiatric medication support services for Medi-Cal beneficiaries who receive services through the local mental health plan. Additionally, RQM-C, or Anchor Health, holds a contract with Carlone Health to serve mild to moderate children and adults. Anchor Health Management also partners with various commercial insurance plans to help meet the healthcare needs of our community. Anchor Health Management also provides whole-person care services to folks who need extra assistance to address their physical and mental health needs. Finally, Anchor Health Management does not have any financial, administrative, or organizational oversight roles over any of the other community-based organizations that provide specialty mental health services in Mendocino County. Each of the community-based organizations that provide our critical and important local mental health services have their own board of directors, their own contracts, their own program mandates, and program responsibilities. Anchor Health Management is proud to be a part of the Mendocino County's mental health system of care. And Anchor Health Management will continue to do our very best to make sure that those folks in our community who need medication support services will be able to continue to get access to this care and support that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you. I'd like to go now online to Mr. Paul Davis, if you could please unmute and be heard.
Good morning Supervisors. Paul Davis, I'm the Executive Director of the Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center here in Fort Bragg. And I appreciate the board considering the approval of our specialty mental health contract. MCHC has provided Medi-Cal billable specialty mental health services since 2016, when we opened our mental health clinic at our then-new property at 101 North Franklin Street in Fort Bragg. We also provided services for a couple of years prior to the implementation of the ASO model. Since then, MCHC has served hundreds of clients experiencing the symptoms of serious mental illness, the majority of whom experience homelessness or have been formerly unhoused, and who have been the recipients of MCHC's wide array of other homeless services. Specialty mental health services are critical to our unhoused and newly housed populations, and the wraparound model that MCHC can provide these clients is more effective for that population than standalone housing supportive services. Good mental health care is critical to positive housing outcomes for the people we serve, both for obtaining and retaining permanent housing. Additionally, our wellness center provides education, patient navigation, and everyday support for our specialty mental health clients and others, including 61 full-service partners from July 1st, 2023 through today. We work closely with the Fort Bragg crew team, as well as our partner providers, to provide more integrated service to our specialty mental health clients. We've been a critical part of the system of care for nearly a decade, and we look forward to continuing to provide these valuable services. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I think Supervisor Williams has a question.
Yeah, do you have any financial interest in the outcome of this item?
Yes, we're a current contractor.
Thank you.
I do not have any additional hands raised online. I don't have any one standing at the podium in the room, so I'd like to bring it back to the board. And I have a question Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Jurdie for you. I'm wondering, understanding your concerns and your need to want to have an, an audit or more information on the specialty mental health services, which have really transitioned and changed over the last, I think Kemper Report's 2018, 2017. So it's been well over five or six years. If the department and the executive office were to work possibly to put out an RFP, because I'm not sure how much it would cost, to have an independent contractor look at the Kemper Report, look at the transition of mental health services to where we are today, moving forward with these contracts, at some point over the next, hopefully, six months, so that before the contracts come back again in a year, which they're going to, they're annual contracts at this point, even though they are scheduled to be annual. So if, if that consultant were able to review where we were, where we've come, and where we should be going next, if that would help, help you be able to approve the contracts as they are today?
I could support something like that if that commitment were made today by the board. I think six months is, six months in the county structure gets you a year, right? I would suggest a much shorter timeframe. It may be as simple as asking the people who receive these services and the public at large, fair sample size, how they think we're doing.
We already do that Supervisor Williams. We have annual, no. We have quarterly meetings for quality improvement control where people do submit complaints, and that's all updated on our website.
That's different than what I'm suggesting. Ask the public at large, you know, fair sample size, how do you think we're doing in this area? Ask some of the patients and ask some of their family members. That, you know, it's not, it's not the only metric we should look at, but it's one metric the board should consider when we're engaging in multimillion-dollar contracts.
Okay. My suggestion is this, that people use the platform that already exists to provide that feedback?
They, they don't. I have people call me and say they're fear, they fear retribution if they speak and they depend on these services. We need an outside entity to anonymously perform the selection and collect the information and anonymize it. It's not fair to the patients who are vulnerable to ask them to engage in a system where they fear their, their criticism could translate into impact on services.
Okay.
And whether, whether or not that's true is irrelevant. It's their feeling.
Thank you. I, I actually think that there are contractors that could potentially do that work. I mean, I participated in the stepping up initiative, which had to do with mental health services within the jail. And there was some data analytics and surveying that went into that contract with that independent contractor. So I think it, I think it exists Supervisor Williams. I don't think that anybody, it doesn't sound like to me that anybody amongst our service providers is shying away from the opportunity to provide their data to the community and have that transparent conversation. Supervisor McGordy?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
My motion would be to approve the contracts before us today, but direct staff to have an outside review of special mental illness treatment and services developed in consultation with Dr. Miller and her staff, Board of Supervisors, and the CEO's office, and focus on outcomes, follow-up, and compare, and comparisons to other counties.
Second.
Okay. And with that, we can vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call for a short break so that our staff can take a short break. So we will come back at 10:35, please.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit mendoready.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire, and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, mendoready.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit mendoready.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program, and I realized, oh, this is, this is nice. And now looking at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor, because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Because I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable. And I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, yeah, this is, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent, and also to give, again, your children that head start in, in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned.
I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless, and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
Thing I really want to mention, just that I'm grateful that I took advantage, because it's something that has put me in touch with my child, or closer to my child, and her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggested, I would say, give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know? They've got some great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand, or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently. When we started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them. But I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. And everything I do, I do it for her. I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive. You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support. And don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendoready.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendoready.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendoready.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendoready.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Supervisors meeting for 9:24. We are on item 4D. Discussion and possible action including adoption of a resolution approving the adoption of implementation of new fire protection mitigation fees for the Yucca Valley Fire Protection District pursuant to Mendocino County Code Chapter 5.36. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established, and all correspondence related has been sent to your email.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And now, are we going to start with Mr. Schwash or Chief Hutchinson? Chief, good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Thanks for having me. This is an important item for us. Our mitigation fees for the fire district haven't been updated since they were originally implemented in 2008. So obviously, we all know that prices of things have gone up, particularly fire equipment and fire stations. As I was discussing with member Jeredy earlier, we don't anticipate that these collected funds will really amount to like an entire fire engine or an entire fire station at any given time, based on the amount of development that we expect to see in the next several years. However, they do offset the impact of when we do have to replace fire apparatus due to our call volume, and we have to add, you know, orders for new staff members and things like that. So that's what these are going to be lined out for. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Jeredy?
Maybe you could just clarify, there's, in the language of the resolution, there's a reference to ADUs and a sign showing less than 750 square feet exempt, over 750 square feet, the fee of $1.07 per foot kicks in. Can you explain as a practical matter, how would that work if someone was building, say, 800 square, 850 square foot?
The fee would only apply to that over 750 square feet.
Okay. And then, as I mentioned, with, it seems it's fairly common with school district impact fees, that the first 500 square feet of an addition to a house, or someone's tearing down a house, and they're building a slightly bigger house, at least with school impact fees, it seems like it's fairly common that there's an exemption, maybe the first 500 square feet is exempt. Is there any such exemption for the fire impact fee?
That's been the fire district's past practice, is the first 500 feet of any addition is exempt. And then if you were to rebuild, as you said, on the same footprint or even slightly larger, as long as it wasn't past that 500 square foot threshold, there would be no additional fees charged.
Thanks.
Are there any other supervisors that have questions for the Chief? Supervisor McGordy?
So it makes sense to expect fees to go up after 2008. And I just, just a comment is that as we struggle with big increases in fees, it's important, I think, to come back often and not let the time go so far because obviously, everybody supports you. That's, that's not the issue. And it's just that this becomes impactful when people are going to get their permits and they're not anticipating the expenses. And just out of curiosity, how many responses do you have in a year?
We were a little over 4,700 last year, and we are currently anticipating to go over 5,000 this year.
Yeah. So you're obviously really important to our mission of maintaining a safe and healthy community. So I don't think you have any problem getting support from this board.
Thank you.
Supervisor Williams?
Move the recommended action of approval.
Second.
Thank you. I will call for public comment first, and I think instead of often, maybe we could use the regularly scheduled for bringing back the fees, so that people do have a consistently updated fee schedule as a builder and as a department. Everybody knows what to expect. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? I have no one coming forward in the room. Are there any members of the public on Zoom that wish to speak? You can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Seeing none, vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for coming this morning. Okay. With that, we are now on to item 4E. Discussion and possible action including direction to staff to create a county noise ordinance. Supervisor McGordy?
So this is a proposal for a Mendocino County noise ordinance. And before we start, I just want to thank for the contributions in this discussion because it's been going on for a while. I've talked with county council office, with Councilors Jared Schwash, County Councilor Charlotte Scott, Jim Ross, and Christian Curtis. So I've been having this talk for a while. And this is driven primarily by constituent complaints. And, you know, in the first district, we're a district with wide open space that typically is valley, right? So sound travels very far because there's not a lot of obstructions. And we also are one of the more populous parts of Mendocino County, so we get complaints. I also want to thank Sheriff Matt Kendall and Captain Quincy Cromer for supplying data and insight. And finally, Gretchen McLaughlin, who also does field noise complaints. So why would you have a noise ordinance? What's, because it's, it's work, right? But loud noise can reduce the quality of life for people and adjacent properties and have negative effects on their well-being and comfort when subject to excessive levels interfering with their daily activities, including sleep, tranquility, overall health, and enjoyment of their dwellings, all documented from numerous places. So our present situation is that without an ordinance, neither code enforcement nor the sheriff's department really have the tools to prevent the nuisance of excessively loud activities. How big is the problem? And these are data that came from the sheriff's office. Thanks to Captain Cromer for putting it together. In the past year, from September 2023 to early August 2024, there was about close to 400 calls in the Code 415, which is a public nuisance, I believe. And you can see it's tends to be highest in the warmer months because people are outside doing things, and it's, it slows down a little bit as it gets cooler and people aren't outside as much. In code enforcement, it's a little bit different. They are more likely to hear from machinery and occasionally animals. So roosters, believe it or not, are incredibly loud creatures, and we'll see some data from that a little bit further in the presentation. It's really important, if we do an ordinance, that it be well-written. So the measurable sound levels have to have real data. This is called objective as opposed to subjective. We can't just say the sheriff showed up and there was a loud noise because in court, in a court case, that wouldn't hold up very well. But we have to have actually measurable metrics that we can assert is really causing a problem. We have to consider zoning situations, considerations as well. Some areas are just noisy by nature, so we're not going to have the same standards for a commercial, commercially zoned property compared to residential properties. There needs to be really clear enforcement procedures and sanctions. And the idea of this ordinance set is targets trouble areas within county jurisdiction. So we're able to address, you know, communities that feel like they're really being affected with loudness. There also needs to be express exemptions, and this is distinct for every county. So for us, for sure, construction is an example. When construction's going on in a residential neighborhood, it's going to be loud. There isn't much you can do about that. We also have a right to farm ordinance in Mendocino County, which allows for exemptions for certain noises. So these are all things that have to be considered. When you're putting together an ordinance, it's going to be tight. And we also have to address prior uses. So if something has been there for years and development is creeping up around it, that has to be considered and thought of. So the typical ordinance has declarations of findings and policy and definitions, powers and duties. And, you know, I won't read all this, but you can see that there, there are elements to it that are pretty standard. And as we look through the ordinances from other counties and cities, they're, they're pretty easy and to find repeatable themes. So it's not like we have to craft something from scratch. There's actually quite a lot of information that, that can be gleaned from the existing body of laws that are covering noise in other places. So this would be typical ordinance guidelines. And we have quiet hours essentially in residential areas from 10 to 7. And as I said before, the maximum noise levels are set on zoning. And noise from any device or machinery must be below 50 decibels at property lines in residential areas. And we're going to talk about what a decibel is in a second. No devices or sound sources over 85 decibels making continuous sound within 2,500 feet of another residence. So we generators, pumps, or other machinery. That's commonly used, like in Monterey County has that particular feature in its noise ordinance. No loud animal sounds, bark and dogs, roosters, et cetera, in residential areas. Exemptions and addresses prior uses in the ordinance. So these are some of the things that we typically would find. This is a big issue that was recommended by Sheriff Kendall, is that these administrative citations are, would be used as opposed to criminal citation. Administrative citation is a civil citation, not punishable by jail, or does not appear in a criminal record. So if you were trying to do it as a criminal citation, it's unlikely that the court system or the district attorney would really want to pay much attention to it, given the serious workload that they already have for crimes of, crimes of property and person. And administrative citations typically include escalating fines for multiple violations. Citations are processed through an administrative hearing process rather than through the court systems. So if somebody disagrees with you and wants to fight with you about it, then they have to go to a hearing. And fines can be attached as property liens if violations occur on private property and they're not paid. So this is the way that a lot of ordinances are written. When we measure loudness, we measure it in decibels, and it's a logarithmic scale. It's sort of the way that the strength of an earthquake is measured. So as we go up 10 decibels, it represents a tenfold increase in sound intensity and a doubling of the perceived loudness. So for instance, sounds at 60 decibels is 10 times louder than sound at 50. 70 is 100 times louder than 50 decibels. 80 is 1,000 times louder, and 90 is 10,000 times louder. So you can see as you go up the decibel scale, it's getting, you know, really painful. And here's just some ideas. So you can see below 70 decibels is probably what we'd experience in kind of everyday life. life. Seventy decibels for me is my threshold of hearing when I have hearing loss, pretty serious. And at seventy decibels, you're starting to get background noise where it's getting hard to hear. So forty decibels is more like your house when it's quiet. When we start getting to eighty and ninety decibels, you need to have hearing protection so because you'll do long-term damage to your hearing. And then anything above a hundred is really, really loud. So we use decibel meters and they can quickly measure it. They need to be class-one meters, and those range in cost from one hundred fifty to eight hundred dollars. So anybody who's involved in, you know, responding to complaint has to have one of these. So the criteria typically are taken either fifty feet from the device or at property lines, depending on the language of the ordinance and the situation. And I advise multiple readings just because I'm a scientist and like data. This is probably our number-one complaint that the sheriff gets is loud party noise. So how would you do it? So how it typically happened is that the sheriff deputy would respond, take the noise level readings with a decibel meter with a body camera on, timestamp and GPS location. So he's basically got legal proof of where he is, or she, and how much noise and what time it is. So again, if we're doing a ten PM to seven AM window of quietness, then it's important to have all of that information. A person has to assess the safety of the situation and approach the source of the noise and people involved, and give an initial warning to cure is the term that's used, which means you have to cease excessive noise. And then give a reasonable time to be sure that the noise violation has ended and return, and then issue a citation if the noise continues. So with that in mind, I, you know, the recommended action on this is to direct staff to develop a noise ordinance based on an administrative citation model. So I've already done a lot of research on this, and I have a lot of information. I've been working with Councilor Schwass on it as well. And before we go much further, I'd like commentary from the sheriff's office and from county council on what they see as the advantages and disadvantages of taking this.
Quite a while because he's brought up a very, very good point. One of the issues that we have in Mendocino County, without a noise ordinance, we are forced to deal with 415 of the penal code, which basically says that you have to, with will, willfully and with malice, create noise with the intent of disturbing the peace of your neighbors. And we have been dealing with this problem for several years now because people have stopped being good neighbors. When we deal with these issues, we also have to have a neighbor who complains, who is willing to sign the citation, who is willing to show up in court and testify to it because a police officer cannot be the victim of 415. We don't live there. And we want to be able to deal with these issues and shut down these problems, but we also don't want to turn into paper lions when we say, close this down, knowing full well that they are not with malice and willfully attempting to create a 415. They're throwing a large party for a birthday or a wedding or something like that. And so I think that the noise ordinance will be extremely helpful to give us a tool that we don't have currently. And then the other thing is people, I would imagine that we have roughly sixty percent of compliance when we arrive on scene, three out of five, roughly sixty percent. When we arrive on scene and we say, hey, please turn it down, a lot of people will. They don't realize that the noise is going so far. The ones who are refusing it, they deserve that citation. And if they continue on, they deserve a bigger citation until such time that it's uncomfortable to their pocketbook to continue to terrorize the neighbors with noise or parties or whatever they're doing. And we're simply asking people to be good neighbors. I'm going to ask Captain Cromer to dig a little deeper into the calls for service and the data that we have on this. And I know that this is something that'll be well-received in Mendocino County because we've got some places that have just done this over and over and over again, and it's time for them to get the point.
Thank you, Sheriff. To the chair and the board. My name is Quincy Cromer. I'm the field services captain for the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. The statistics for this, I want to explain just a little bit because I did meet with Supervisor McGordy when he was gathering this information. We have specific call types that are used by our dispatchers to enter calls for service, and the rest of the information would be placed in the narrative for the responding deputies to know what's happening. And as often as you would probably understand, it's not usually as reported. We get this information from a witness or a third party, and when we get there, we realize something else is occurring. We have a disturbance call type. That's, it could be any type of disturbance. We don't have a noise complaint because there is no noise ordinance. So what our goal would be is if this is pursued through the board and through the county to create a new call type just for the specific noise complaint so we can track this accurately in the future to know how often it's called in and to know what the results of those types of calls are. To provide the statistics for Supervisor McGordy, we went to the disturbance call type itself, which for full disclosure, there's over seventeen hundred a year that are entered in by our dispatchers for a disturbance of some kind. I took those seventeen hundred calls and narrowed those down if the word loud was used anywhere in that call for service. Could be a loud music, could be a loud subject, could be a loud generator, could be a loud engine, could be a loud leaf blower. If the word loud was used in that call for service, that resulted in the three hundred and eighty-nine calls that Supervisor McGordy included in his report. And in my conversations with the sheriff and the under sheriff regarding this, it's a tool. We're somewhat handicapped in our ability to bluff people, for lack of a better term, to say, please turn on the music or your neighbor might sign a citizen's arrest on you. And then nobody wants to do that. We want them to be good neighbors, but at the end of the day, if they call our bluff, we have no other recourse. I don't think anyone that signs up to be a deputy sheriff with Mendocino County wants to be the noise police. But at the end of the day, if we have another option to enforce this situation for those really, really bad situations where there's, I mean, knocking plates off of the neighbor's house, then that's where we would want to use this tool to make peace for the neighborhood. So that's the information I have. If you have any questions regarding the statistics, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I had two pins up, but I don't think they were specifically regarding the statistics. And Deputy County Council Schwass, I think Supervisor McGordy was sort of leading that you might have some feedback about creating an ordinance or et cetera.
Yeah, thank you. Deputy County Council Schwass, I just wanted to, my feedback is that in creating a effective noise ordinance, it will need to be tailored specifically for the county. We do have, as Supervisor McGordy mentioned, we have the Right the Farm Act, or Right the Farm in our code section. And then, so, and we need to, given the county zoning, it's not necessarily spot zoning, but there's a lot of residential zones mixed with agricultural zones, we'll need to take that too in consideration when drafting this ordinance. And so just to set expectations in preparing this ordinance and so that it's not rushed through, because I think this county has had ordinances that have been rushed through, that we, you know, we are, we will need to work together with the sheriff's department, with code enforcement, with PBS to draft this tailored ordinance. So I just wanted to set expectations that it's not necessarily cut and paste from other counties and other jurisdictions. We would need to tailor one to, so we can tailor a unique tool for the sheriff's department to use and so that it can be effective and properly enforced.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Williams, and then Supervisor Hasek.
Yeah, I'm happy to see the collaboration, and you have my support. But Supervisor McGordy, I'm curious, one of your slides had a term residential area. I would have a hard time deciding if, what the residential areas are in the county. I wonder if this should be more broad. I mean, frankly, if it's a commercial operation that's impacting another business, maybe the same concern holds. If the commercial zoned parcel is impacting residents regardless of whether they're on TPZ or Rangeland, don't you want it to apply? I wonder if maybe that's a term we should strike.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not a legal expert and I'm not a planning expert, so I'm just using this as an example of where a lot of the complaints come from. It's from residentially zoned properties inside of areas like Redwood Valley, where rural residential seems to be an area where we get a lot of complaints. And because of the nature of how Redwood Valley is set up, you're right. So there could be somebody who's excessively loud inside of an industrial park that's exceeding that eighty-five decibels on a regular basis, and it could be that their neighbors can't hear themselves think in the industrial park, or they can't carry on business because it's impactful. So that'd be an example of where.
I think your goal is the affected party, if they have a home site and they're living there and the decibel's crossing over their property line, you want this to apply. And just thinking about how chaotic our zoning is, it may be better to not take the zoning of the offender or the impacted.
Well, I think that's a discussion for county council and the sheriff and whoever else works with them to, because this is, as stated, we have a lot of different kinds of land uses, and it's not a very homogenous sort of county in terms of where people are and their activities are.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, I want to thank Supervisor McGordy for working on this and doing the research and bringing it forward because it certainly is an issue that affects the quality of life in Mendocino County. You know, I think that there's a lot of work to be done because like Deputy County Council Schwass said, you know, we don't want something that is just toothless. And we found that before with the vegetation abatement ordinance, you know, that it was really difficult to implement it. And so, you know, we want to get this right. One of the questions I had was about, it says targets trouble areas within county jurisdiction. You know, I'm just wondering what that actually means because it seems like wherever this happens, it should apply equitably.
I agree, but I can almost guarantee you that if the sheriff deputies go out at eleven o'clock on Saturday night, there'll be some areas that routinely are loud.
Yes. Absolutely, I agree with that. And we have, there are other things that occur when our deputies get called out to these places. We find that people are using their land, not what it is for what it was zoned for. They're using land for things that they, they don't have permits for, weddings, parties, events that are not permitted. We don't know anything about it until we get the noise complaint, and that's one of those things where we would begin working immediately with code enforcement because some of these things, they're picking up some steam and people are doing them over and over and over again, and we're hearing about it from the neighborhoods.
Yeah, so the practical application would be certainly there's going to be some areas that are.
Yes, we have some areas that are on the radar, and they fall into that forty percent who simply don't listen when we show up.
Right. Okay. A couple other questions about the load, no loud animal noises. You know, it just seems like, I mean, certainly like to see how that pans out. When you have a dog barking at night, are you going to call the sheriff? You know, the expectation has to be reasonable.
It does have to be reasonable, and we have to have a measured response. Barking dogs historically have been handled by animal control, and that's probably exactly what we would do. We would refer that over to animal control. Animal control at that point could work with code enforcement and building and planning, and they can make a difference in those areas. Honestly, I don't think I'd be sending my personnel out to those types of things because we've got another agency who can handle that.
Yeah, and I imagine there's things on the books, same thing with like people who have vehicles without mufflers. I think that that's, that's not necessarily your bailiwick, that's probably highway patrol. Those are the kinds of things that we have to sort of sort that, you know, would be part of this discussion. I also, we have Gretchen McLaughlin here from code enforcement. I really want her to weigh in a little bit too because some of this, I think, could be preventive if people from the beginning have actually properly designed things. A good example would be stationary motors that are properly muffled and soundproofed if they're adjacent to, you know, homes and residences. Just tell us a little about your experience too, because I know you get called in periodically.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Gretchen McLaughlin, code enforcement manager with Planning and Building Services. So I kind of wanted to actually give you guys a little bit more information so that we guys can make an informed decision overall in terms of what code enforcement does do with noise-related complaints and where our shortfalls are. As Supervisor McGordy highlighted, we had seventy-one complaints between 2020 until about August first of this year. And about twenty-six of those were duplicative, where like they were like cluster complaints. And so ultimately, it kind of comes down to forty-five locations that we receive complaints for. Some of them were as a result of like frost fans or loud generators and stuff that kind of coordinated with cannabis cultivation for in-program sites. And then we had fifteen standalone noise complaints, which were, majority were complaints also associated with just like zoning and building violations. So generally and historically, code enforcement will still receive noise complaints or general complaints that also include noise, and we will try to address those complaints of noise by looking at it as whether or not it's caused by a zoning or a building violation or illegal cannabis cultivation. So we try to do enforcement by attacking the activity that's causing the noise as opposed to basically just saying we can't deal with the noise itself, we're sorry. Anywhere else that doesn't fall within our purview, whether it's like a barking dog-type complaints, usually those are actually specifically animal control versus like maybe like if it's a rooster complaint because it's growing all the time. We will address that if we can look at the zoning and see if they're even qualified to have any type of animals under light agriculture or general agriculture uses based off of their zoning. The other feedback considerations that I do have a list for you guys includes some just like regular logistical considerations because I'm not quite sure how code enforcement, at least speaking for my division, how we would fit in all of this in terms of enforcement. But one of the things to consider is where this would fit and within our enforcement priorities that you guys have provided us, you know, as recent as December of last year. Community expectations in terms of how quick the expectation is that we respond to these. Generally speaking, for code enforcement, at least in our activities, we have to witness the violation to occur in order for us to effectively deem it a violation and take appropriate action. So if we get out there for like a barking dog complaint and it's not barking, it's closed. Our investigative process, we typically have a series of steps that we have to take to ensure our officer safeties because we're not law enforcement, we're not uniformed. Our authority is limited to an orange vest essentially, and so we have to be able to get a lot of background information for each site we're engaging. So this is a time constraint that we would face, at least for code enforcement, not necessarily for the sheriff's office. General resource, staffing, funding, tools like the decibel readers, those are things that we would have to look into. And then for code enforcement, we have to ensure under our process that we maintain complainant confidentiality. So we wouldn't be able to utilize any of like, you know, videos that the neighbors provide or photos or anything like that to be as our supportive evidence towards the case. We have to observe it ourselves. So we have to do everything we can to make sure that we're not pointing the direction over to the complainants, basically. And then if code enforcement were to do anything like outside of ours, it sounds like the sheriff's office might be kind of doing most of the after-hours stuff, but that would be a change in classification for most of my people. And so that might have to be a consideration through the Civil Service Commission. Field limitations. I mean, I guess I should clarify before I keep going into this. Supervisor McGordy, is the intention that we would be doing after-hours potentially for code enforcement?
No, no. I kind of see code enforcement coming in as for more stationary sort of noise sources where, you know, something like a generator or a loud motor.
Okay.
Or clanking equipment that's making sounds that probably are associated with, you know, a land use issue. And it would be something that would be an investigation during routine hours.
Okay.
Quite honestly, I think most of the complaints that. Quite honestly, I think most of the complaints that the sheriff's department is getting is loud noise, loud noise after-hours and parties, that's probably our biggest concern.
Okay. And then really then I'll just kind of skip over then from the code enforcement standpoint and just switch over to general considerations for administrative citations and processes, just a thing to consider. We brought this up actually during the hazardous vegetation ordinance and the limitations that we would run into for administrative enforcement. That generally comes down to how much we can charge for, or I guess like the sheriff's office would be able to charge per violation that are kind of regulated under California government code. So unless if Jared Schwass was able to find something different, I would believe it would be the one hundred for the first violation, two hundred for the second violation, and five hundred, is that correct? So, and every administrative citation can be appealed. And when that happens, we would have to set it up for an appeal hearing. And generally speaking, as of last time I checked, a hearing officer costs seven hundred dollars. So just to start that process. And then including all of the staff time, like for the sheriff's office time for responding to calls, you know, preparing for hearings, working with county council for hearings and stuff, it can really add up into the thousands of dollars per hearing for these citations. And so that's definitely something to consider. And then also cost recovery after that. And I think Supervisor McGordy might have some more information in terms of what that might look like based off of your research. But it still does take staff time and county council's time to recoup some of those costs as well. And so some of these cases could go up to like six thousand, seven thousand dollars just to get it through from start to finish. So if everybody appeals, that does get a citation, that can really add up. And the biggest variable in all of that is what the hearing officer ultimately determines. So if the hearing officer does not side with the county's actions, we may not be able to get cost recovery for the, for all of the officers' actions and citations and all the time it took for county council and recouping the cost for the hearing officer. So it does get expensive. So I just wanted to at least highlight that those are some of the things we might have to navigate through the administrative enforcement process.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams, did you have a specific question for?
No, not specific.
Okay. Thank you for providing that. And did you have a question you wanted to ask before I open public comment?
I just wanted to move the recommended action and thank collaborators.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I do believe we have people here for public comment on this item, so I'd like to make sure they're heard. If you could please come forward, and if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, press star nine on your telephone.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Jasmine Randall and I'm here with the Mendocino County Farm Bureau. We would like to commend the board's efforts to enhance the quality of life for residents throughout this ordinance. We do believe that it's critical that agriculture, which plays a vital role in the economic and cultural fabric of our county, is properly protected within the framework of creating this ordinance. As we know, Mendocino County has long supported agricultural operations through the Right to Farm Ordinance, which was enacted to ensure that normal and routine farming activities are not compromised by the expansion of residential development or regulatory changes. This ordinance has proved a necessary safeguard for our farmers and ranchers within our membership who are already navigating numerous challenges such as shortages in labor, drought conditions, and market fluctuations, and increased regulatory challenges. Today, we respectfully request that the board include specific language within the proposed noise ordinance that acknowledges and upholds the protections afforded by the Right to Farm Ordinance. Agriculture often involves activities that may generate noise, such as operating machinery, managing livestock, or performing necessary fieldwork at non-standard hours. It might also be beneficial for staff to indulge in looking in the noise ordinance proposed by other counties, which includes disverbiage, such as the Monterey County Noise Ordinance, which exempts agricultural practices. These practices are essential in maintaining the productivity and sustainability of our local farms and ranches, and they should not be inadvertently restricted by new noise regulations. By incorporating this new protection, the county will reaffirm its commitment to supporting agriculture, which is also balancing the needs of residents in non-agricultural zones. We believe that this will not only avoid potential conflicts, but will ensure a better relationship between the rural and urban communities. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we look forward to working collaboratively with the board to ensure that the news, the noise ordinance supports both the well-being of the residents and the continued progress of our agricultural industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to come forward?
Good morning, Chair, Board, and Staff. My name is Charles Coleman. I live in Redwood Valley, lived in the same property for thirty-eight years, and I'm in support of the Farm Bureau side of things. I think it's been the first couple of months we were there in the spring, we thought aliens were landing because they came in to do the sulfuring in the middle of the night and all these lights are coming on. We fully realize that that is a part of being in an agriculture area. We've been in this house for thirty-eight years, and the last two or three years, there has been very, very loud parties. It's not like you're having a little party for your kid's birthday. These things will start sometimes at five in the afternoon and go till five in the morning. And I'm being very truthful in this. Some of the neighbors have called and they've said, get some F-ing earplugs. Some of these neighbors are kind of scary. You hear them at nighttime shooting their semi-automatic pistols out because they want you to know they're there. They want you to feel threatened by them. And quite frankly, we do. So getting here for me today is something just to say, I'm up here standing in front of you, I'm asking for support of getting noise ordinance started. I've talked with Supervisor McGordy probably a year and a year and a half ago to try and get this going on. It's pretty much the same people, about five people around us, but two of them are within a hundred feet of my property line. One of them is almost a daily occasion, the other one, they'll go for maybe a month's time, times without a party. But then they'll go till two-thirty in the morning. I've called the sheriff's office, I was a nine-one-one dispatcher for Cal Fire, thirty-five years with Cal Fire. I understand going onto somebody's property to deal with issues, they always had open arms when I got there because I'm putting out their fire. But when the sheriff's officers come along to tell them to turn the noise down, it's a different story. It really does not belong with building and planning. The noise ordinance for partying after-hours needs to have somebody there with some authority to say, please turn it down. So when they have come, because they haven't always been able to come because of their call volume, when they've left fifteen minutes later, it's twice as loud as it was. So we're being punished by calling in and asking them to turn it down. And so something needs to be done to control this. I'm totally good with the sounds of agriculture, that's not an issue. But if we were to put our property on the market, I believe by California law, I would have to disclose that noise. So now our property values are being diminished upon sale because we have to declare a noise issue in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood, we're five acres, we're probably one of the larger parcels right there that's not grapes on it. Most of the neighborhood parcels within a couple thousand feet are probably two to five acres, probably a couple of them smaller than that. So what do you call a residential neighborhood? I believe we're zoned five-acre ag on ours. So is that residential? We have two residential houses on it. One of them is at rental, it's empty right now because of the noise. And we're trying to get it rented again, but I'm going to have to tell the person that rents it, be aware there's noise happening for parties here. So I really feel like we've kind of been left hanging out to dry. I thank you Supervisor McGordy for what you have done, anybody else that's had their problems in their neighborhoods or their districts as well. It is a real problem. And so I hope we can get some real addressed issues. But I really think the sheriff's office is probably the only place that it can go to.
Thank you.
So over on time, if you guys have any questions, I'm glad to answer your questions.
I don't see any questions I'd like to appreciate. I think maybe you were a social media commenter that came in real life, so I always appreciate that.
Well, just to look at the social media, the few times I posted something because of a party, I've gotten pretty thoroughly beat up because people are complaining about, well, you'll complain about a Mexican's party or Hispanic party, but you won't complain about, you know, a white party. I don't want to get involved in it. It's noise, it's just noise itself between ten o'clock and five o'clock in the morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you.
And just a quick comment on that issue too. It's not just Redwood Valley. I mean, people have called me from south of Fort Bragg and complaining that there's vacation rentals where people come up to party and they're very noisy and it's very disruptive to everyone, so.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Maureen Phillips. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm here to save my roosters. Donald and Richard deserve to have a happy life. They do crow. But I'm going to call them my guardian roosters. When the skunk comes to the chicken coop, the roosters go off. When somebody comes in the yard, the roosters go off. If you stand by the chicken pen and try to talk on the phone, the roosters go off. They're not constant. I do have a problem with some neighbors that have barking dogs. You know what? You go over and talk to your neighbor. Unfortunately, I live down noise level of granite, and yes, they have worked mostly all night, all summer. They're doing their job. Do I enjoy it? No. But we need to figure out something. And I was a little concerned with what this young lady said about if you get a noise complaint and you get a citation and you go to fight it, that you may be responsible for paying all the fees of everybody that, the court costs and the deputies. If you have a vindictive neighbor, that I may have one, and they constantly call and you keep getting citations and you want to fight it, is that then going to adversely affect your finances? That's a concern for, not a super big concern, but it could be a concern. Can I live without my roosters? Absolutely. But I really do enjoy them because they do get me up and I do get to yoga on time. So there's that. But anyways, thank you for all you're doing. I do know, so there's some parties, I don't have that particular problem in my neighborhood. So I guess I'm just lucky there's a few barking dogs, but, and I am a downwind from like Mendocino Clubhouse and occasionally there's some parties, but they're very good about turning the music off at ten o'clock at night. It's just, not like Charlie, mine's occasional and we just live with it.
Supervisor Williams, did you have a question for the speaker?
Yeah, just some point of clarification, hopefully. I don't want to take your roosters away.
Thank you.
I think the goal here is if roosters at the, you know, crack of dawn are waking up the neighbors and it's a loud decibel, well, maybe they should be kept inside, right? There needs to be some sort of mitigation. So I don't think anybody wants to take away livestock or farm animals, it's just a matter of being good neighbors. Is that, do you think that's reasonable, or do you have a suggestion for us?
Well, when you say inside, what do you suggest?
Well, I don't, whatever it takes to control it so that it's not crossing the property line to the neighbors.
Oh, it's not crossing, it's the sound of the particular animal, because the animal's inside an enclosed area with a roof.
Is it impacting neighbors?
They tell me they hear them. I don't, there's another one, they talk to each other.
Yeah.
And yes, sometimes, the other night, they were going off at three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, but also where the neighbor's dogs were going off also. So the question was, what was in the neighborhood?
I think we're trying to avoid a situation where there's self-help and giving law enforcement, code enforcement, a tool to address some of these situations. But I just want to be clear, the goal is not to go after anybody's animals.
Yeah. It's hard to control a rooster, they.
Well, but imagine you're the neighbor and you're being woken up at three in the morning.
I am being woken up at three in the morning. But I'm also being woke up by granite. I'm being woke up by the neighbor that works at the lumber mill that goes to work at midnight. You know, I mean, there's just, there's just stuff. I mean, and I live in an area that's half-acre acre lots. When I moved in that property in nineteen-seventy-seven, almost everybody had livestock. Now the properties are being subdivided into two houses, it's getting more populated. So my neighborhood may be considered residential. I've taxed as rural residential, but, I mean, I get that not everybody enjoys them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Hasek? Are there any other public comments in the room? I don't see any online and I don't see anyone else coming forward in the room. Sure, we have time.
Parties that go till midnight, one o'clock, two, three, four, or five o'clock in the morning, present another hazard that I didn't mention, that's the people leaving these parties and extremely intoxicated. So they're putting other people at risk. Bars used to do that. Bars don't really do that anymore because of the drunk driving campaign. But there are people leaving that are intoxicated and I just think it's a danger to the public that needs to be considered in this noise ordinance as well.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Well, I'm supportive of this concept to do this ordinance, but I think that the recommended action is to direct staff to work on the creation of a county noise ordinance. I think that we need to have supervisory input on that, so maybe we need to have an ad hoc committee work with staff to create this. Because there's going to be so many issues that have been raised today and more that come along that we need to deal with and give them direction as we work through this.
I think you're right, and the reason we're talking about it today is because I've probably abused the system a little bit of going over four hours of conversations with staff on this topic. So, yeah, definitely supervisors have to be involved in the fact that I'm going to be stepping off the board in the beginning of the year, so there needs to be probably someone who's going to still be here to help direct the effort, so.
Director Krog, did you want to add some more information to the conversation?
Thank you. Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. I don't have any specific comment about ad hoc creation or not, but I did just want to ask the board to sort of give a little bit further direction in terms of where this fits into overall priorities and sort of directives for the affected departments as well. Obviously, you'll have work being done by county council's office, planning and building services, code enforcement staff, and the sheriff's office. So I think just a little bit of clarity for us in terms of where this fits into the overall department priorities would be helpful. And then just, of course, noting that we'll likely track our time related to the ordinance preparation because it will be a general fund expense that we can report on then, depending on where it fits into our priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Williams?
I move we direct staff to work on the creation of a county noise ordinance in collaboration with Supervisor McGordy and retroactively approve his use of staff time.
I would like to add some comments because I haven't spoken yet, and I know Supervisor McGordy has had this on his mind since he became a supervisor, actually. And I've followed the conversation a lot, and I see really many sides of the equation. It seems like there are a lot of puzzle pieces that are going to need to fit together to make this work well. One concern that I do have is stigma related to certain types of music at parties and also specifically of the cannabis industry. So I want to make sure that there is, and it sounds like from the sheriff's office, that there will be a tracking mechanism that can help track what kind of calls the sheriff's office or code enforcement might be going out to so that the board can review whether or not this is causing specific neighborhood concerns to be elevated versus neighbors working together to try to solve problems. And it does sound like there are some good ideas in the community about ways and with our departments about ways to sort of implement this. So I live in the city limits and have two roosters, and we wake up about the same time, four-thirty every morning, that are right out my window. And so I personally appreciate the farm noises living in the city. Hey, I'm up, they're up, it's fine with me. But I understand also the concern over loud music and parties and perhaps some people having establishments that aren't licensed or permitted with the county to have events. So it seems like a fairly complicated issue, and it also doesn't seem as straightforward as just cut and pasting from what I heard from county council's office. So, County Council Scott, did you?
Yes, thank you, Charlotte Scott, County Council. I would suggest, you know, we certainly have the input from the research that Supervisor McGordy has done, his consultation with the sheriff, the information from code enforcement. I think, I would suggest that your board rely on county council to work with the affected departments to draft an ordinance and bring that back for discussion. But I think part of that analysis will include considering what can be effective, considering also bringing back what the, you know, budget estimates would be for enforcement, because I think we're hearing it's really going to impact general fund. And so I want to make sure that that's something that you hear as well before you entertain adopting any such ordinance. But I do think we have enough information to start that in consultation with code enforcement, sheriff, and we can bring something back if we encounter in our process of working on that, that there is a on that, that there is a specific hurdle we need your further direction on. We will promptly bring that back. But yes, I think, I think we're at the point where we have enough information to do that.
Supervisor Williams?
I'm trying to read between the lines. I don't understand why cannabis is being brought up related to a noise ordinance. I mean, it's a complaint-driven system. If somebody calls, there will be a response. The county is not deciding which noises to target.
Okay.
To the public. So is there something more that I'm missing? Or was there a catalyst for this that I don't know about? I don't know why cannabis is being mixed in discussion with a noise ordinance.
Supervisor Jordy?
I just wanted to express support for an ordinance. I saw online that County of Sonoma, which is an agricultural county, has had an ordinance in effect since 1992, so 32 years. Probably past time for Mendocino County to have some kind of ordinance. And I would assume that if County Council, staff, community members were to look at other agricultural counties, Sonoma, Napa, Monterey, that they could probably find how those counties have addressed agricultural uses and still had a functioning, a noise ordinance. I have noticed a number of them. They talk about constant sounds versus, you know, periodic sounds. So I think there's, there's a way to, to implement it in a rural county.
But there's a motion. Is there a second? Do you need a repeat of the motion?
Was I the maker?
Yeah.
I, I moved that we direct staff to work on the creation of a county noise ordinance. I think, I'm going to take the recommended action. I think County Council can reach out to supervisors to coordinate. Is that reasonable? Or do you want a supervisor assigned?
Charlotte Scott, County Council, I don't believe we need an ad hoc or a particular supervisor to be assigned, but I, I county, I think we have enough information. And if we need any further outreach that requires board action, we'll bring it back to the board.
Supervisor McGordy, are you comfortable with the recommended?
Yes.
Okay. The, I move the recommended action.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Uh, thank you, everybody who assisted me in bringing this to the table.
With that, we are on item 4F, discussion of possible action, including formation of an ad hoc committee to work with County Council to draft an ordinance limiting campaign contributions to county elected campaigns to $1,000 from an individual and $2,000 from a committee, as well as overall spending limits per campaign cycle. Supervisor Hachek?
Yeah, so the basis of this is to avoid corruption or the appearance of corruption. The state of California limits it, an individual contribution to a campaign to $5,500. There's lots of other counties throughout the state that have taken it, you know, limited it a lot further, such as Humboldt County at 1,500, Sonoma County at 3,500. But, you know, talking with some of the supervisors around here, that Humboldt County is in the process of really redoing their, their ordinance and lowering it to 500 or $1,000. Santa Cruz is at 500. You can see in the summary of requests where other counties are. And I just think that I wanted to get the opinion of the board to see if this was worth pursuing because I, I think that it would be valuable for good government and avoid corruption and the appearance of corruption.
Supervisors? Supervisor McGordy?
So how, how does this fit in with like organizations like, like our, our unions and, and other interests?
So a lot of the counties have a limit for the individual contribution. And then if there's a committee, that they have another limit. There's some other factors that I've mentioned here about independent expenditure campaigns. If those are, if like over $10,000 in independent expenditure is spent on like a recall motion of a supervisor, then some of the limits might be doubled or such. But basically, there are two kind of levels, the individual and the committee level.
And does that include political action committees? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So that $2,000 would be the most that they could raise for a candidate?
Well, that's what I'm proposing here, but that limit, we can, you know, we can discuss that. The idea is, do we want to pursue some kind of limit?
Supervisor Jordy?
I, I support some kind of limits. And I assume that other counties have looked at the legal analysis about what is permissible in establishing the limits. And so I don't think this would take a tremendous amount of staff time to do the research. You're probably going to look at three or four counties, bring back a couple of choices and let the board vote on it.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, John, in general, I support taking money out of politics. I think it's a good direction to begin looking at. I have, I have two concerns. One is we don't want a situation where a candidate is outspent by political action committees, right? So it needs to be a level playing field. We don't want to try to reduce corruption and find that adversely impacted the underfunded campaign if they're up against outside money that's funneled through a PAC. So that's, looking at the details, I think is important. And then I guess the other is the, the spending limit. Maybe County Council could weigh in. Is that something that we can actually do? Or is it Buckley v. Valeo on spending limits federally? It's one thing about regulating how the contributions, but it's another regulating the free speech of money being spent.
Charlotte Scott, County Council, this would be just looking at limiting campaign contributions.
So I, maybe I mistaken, but I thought in the language. Let me pull it up. Spending limits per campaign cycle is in the title.
This is something we would obviously address in, in reviewing other ordinances and researching. Obviously, we would be mindful of First Amendment rights. And that is certainly a consideration that there, there is a First Amendment political speech component to this. And so we would not be, we would be very careful in anything we helped to draft on behalf of the board. And also just to point out, this would be very limited in application. It would be focused on the, only a few elected offices of the county. It doesn't apply to all, I mean, it, it's a narrower focus. And so I think that may be why Supervisor Hachek was considering an ad hoc committee because it is really something uniquely applicable to your board, being among the, the highest number of those who would be impacted by the ordinance.
So Supervisor Hachek, I, I support you on this. The recommended action calls for an overall spending limit. I think that might put the county in a position of getting sued and losing. So if we could reword that to focus on the, the contribution limit, I would be more comfortable. I, I support you in concept. I just, I know we're broke and I don't want legal expenses.
Yeah, if I could just reply, there's, so those are issues that we need to take into consideration. You know, if there's a PAC or this independent expenditure coming at a person, then we can, you know, other counties have changed, you know, if that happens. Also, some counties have this overall contribution limit, other counties don't. So that's one of those considerations too, whether we want to go there or not. And certainly it'd be different if it's a countywide office versus a supervisory district. But those are just some of the issues that I think that this ad hoc could address. And I've appreciated the help of County Council and the CEO and the elections.
And last question, who, who would serve on this ad hoc?
Well, that's for us to determine.
Are you volunteering?
I'd certainly volunteer.
You need one more.
I'm not sure that we're going to have a lot of public comment on this item, so I'll go ahead and weigh in. I appreciate you bringing the item forward. The initial talking points of 1,000 per individual and 2,000 per committee or organization make sense to me. Within the city of Ukiah, they have a voluntary spending limit at 5,850, so $5,850. The idea that your spending limit would match your jurisdiction, for instance, the population of your supervisory district seems like something that would be easy for candidates to follow. And certainly, we've been around the 16,000, 16,000 population to 18,000. Now, maybe it'll get to 20,000, which seems like it should be enough money to run a campaign for a supervisory district. In the city of Ukiah's voluntary spending agreement, they do have a 25% increase for a recall campaign. So that is something that might already be an opportunity to look at their ordinance to draft something. So I think in, in general, I'm supportive of the idea of sort of the dollar amounts you've already laid out. I didn't really have any adjustments or feedback for those.
Supervisor McGordy?
Well, it costs to run a campaign. So that's, the, the question is, would this can be a constraint where people wouldn't be able to afford to run? Because what happens then is that people spend their own money on it. But I know, and it's not unusual for supervisors to spend 40,000 to 60,000 to run a campaign effectively with mailings and, and advertising and signs and all those other things. Is this going to make it difficult for people to be able to run?
Supervisor Hachek?
Well, those are the things that we need to consider if we adopt this. What I wanted is overall, you know, approval of going forward, seeing if there's that kind of input. Yeah, certainly what I, we don't want is like an incumbent to, like the limit being so low that it stifles anyone taking on an incumbent. So, so there are those kind of considerations we need to kind of flesh out. There's work to be done on it.
Seems like we have some board support here. I did, I did want to say, I'd like to open it up for public comment if there are any members of the public that'd like to come forward or are on Zoom. If you could use the raise hand feature, press star nine on your phone. I have none, no one in the room in Ukiah. So I, did I have a motion, Supervisor Williams?
No, I support the general concept.
Okay.
I personally have aversion to sitting on ad hocs. So two of you would have to agree?
Okay. Supervisor Hachek?
Well, I would certainly, I'm volunteering to be on this ad hoc to work this out. Hope that someone else does too.
It might be a little unprecedented, but I'd like to ask Supervisor McGordy to sit on the ad hoc because I think you're leaving the board, you ran a campaign only four years ago and probably raised more money than we're talking about now. You seem to have some feedback about the cost for the campaign. So it seems like you might have some ideas that you can contribute to bring the item forward if you are not adverse to the ad hoc.
I'm not adverse. And I work well with John.
Well, I, I would move that we create an ad hoc of supervisors, Hachek and McGordy to work on this item and to bring something forward to the board.
Second.
Vote by the button, please.
Excuse me, sorry, Charlotte Scott, County Council. If we could use the recommended language so that it, it, formation of an ad hoc, but working with County Council to draft, just so that you have our input in carrying the ordinance.
Sure, no problem.
Point of order, I don't know that the chair can be chairing and make the motion. I don't have a problem with it personally, but I think, can you?
I don't, it's not, yeah, I don't think it's... If somebody else wants to make the motion, so be it.
Well, I'll make the motion that, if you want to chair, I defer to you. Okay. I'll make the motion that we form an ad hoc composed of Supervisor McGordy, Supervisor Hachek to work with County Council to draft an ordinance limiting campaign contributions. And the rest of the language.
Thank you.
Second. Matter.
Vote by the button, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on item 4G, the CEO report. CEO Antol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The CEO report is attached in both English and Spanish version. There's quite a bit of information and I really appreciate all the departments that have come forward. And we'll start with civility in the workplace. My office and HR have been actively focusing on promoting civility in the workplace. Civility is the cornerstone of a positive work environment where mutual respect and constructive communication and effective conflict resolution are prioritized. Some of the items that we will be working on in this initiative, workshops and training, clear policies and guidelines, encouragement of open dialogue. I really appreciate that collaboration with HR. Your ag commissioner has created a very quite extensive report, so really appreciate that, her stepping in. The agriculture access PAG pass program, so it's an ag pass program. Wildfires can spread and impact agriculture properties. The ag pass program identifies bona fide agriculture operators within the county to seek and gain verified identification and potential aggra, access to ag land. Law enforcement officials would grant access to their community, through their communications to the incident commander has determined that it's safe and ag pass holders can go to their, escorted to their properties during potential wildfires. Crop and impact statistics, the California Department of Food and Agriculture and the Mendocino County are interested in checking yield losses, estimates related to potential heat wave damage. We know early sunbird drying, smaller fruit sizes, and some other grape varietals are more sensitive. Animal care services continues to work. They're thrilled to announce the purchase of the caravan, which was approved by this board last meeting. They anticipate hitting the road shortly after the estimated arrival of the van, which is mid-November. This will increase the spaying neutering throughout the county. We want to, they also want to thank the Sheriff's Office for providing opportunities for animal control to attend, attend trainings, and more trainings are scheduled. Behavior health, it is Suicide Prevention Month. BHRS is raising awareness this month to provide Suicide Prevention Month, the 8th through the 14th, and then Prevention Day, September 10th, reducing stigma and encouraging individuals to seek help and discuss suicide prevention and warning signs. The 24/7 toll-free crisis line, 1-855-838-0404. Economic Development Division has put up the unemployment rate. So the unemployment rate for Mendocino County is 5.2%, which is actually lower than the state unemployment rate at 5.8. There's many programs that they're working on. Economic Recreation Economy, California Job First, to name a few. Environmental Health in the Land Use Area, inspectors have processed over 100 permits, including building permits, site evaluations, water wells, applications, ensuring compliance with local regulation and supporting community development. Their other statistics are reported. In preparation, this is from HR, in preparation for the upcoming open enrollment period, Employee Health and Benefit Health Plan Consultants Alliance are hosting a three-part webinar training called the Discovery Series. These trainings will be presented live, but also recorded. We encourage everybody to sign up for those so they understand their benefits. Very exciting news, I think we talked about this before. The Library Journal recently announced Mendocino County's Library Round Valley Branch, the winner of the 2024 Best Small Library in America Award. This recognition honors the Round Valley Library's exceptional commitment to serving the unique needs of the community as a vital hub for sustainability, really, resiliency, and includes inclusivity. The museum continues a ton of great work moving forward with their mod- The museum continues a ton of great work moving forward with their model. They are renting a room. It's called the Wanacott Room, so if you're in need of hosting, please come forward and and join at our museum. Planning and Building Services continues to work on their the county's strategic plan objectives and some efficiencies in their office. Since the beginning of the amnesty program, the department has received a total of sixteen amnesty permit applications. And the details of where those applications are in the process, and I believe that expires November 1st of this year. Public health, public health recognized September 15th through the 21st as child passenger safety awareness week to educate and re- raise awareness of the importance of protecting children of all ages for for car seats and booster seats to be used. They continue throughout. There's many places that they are visiting and they continue to be have a presence at the events in the county, throughout the county. Social Services is sharing their information. They've created a new dashboard as well. They would like to point out that the county is geographically diverse, as you know, and driving a couple of hours in to a county office is not always feasible. The social service outreach and navigation unit provides Medi-Cal, CalFresh, Covered California and CalWorks application assistance. They are also answering questions, look up and caseload documents and help the community connect these resources. This unit has been traveling to Covelo for over a decade. The unit creates a monthly work work pantry for the community in need of hun- for hunger, which is now being successfully ran by the Round Valley Family Resource Center. Many things are happening at the OES office. They continue to be active throughout the community. They we did a great tour and of the Cal Fire Emergency Operations Center in Hellupad recently at the end of August. It was quite fun to be there as they did that control burn. The OES was also present at the Mendocino County Fair and Apple Show as well as the Ukiah Fair earlier in August. The UC Extension Program again has a really great report attached. They are wanting to. They are excited about the year ahead. Mendocino County Master Gardener Program and volunteers welcoming the UC Master Gardener Program is a volunteer-based program for adults who have a passion for gardening and will like to give back to the community. We've also put them in contact with the museum, so we're hope to make a connection there. There's other things throughout the report. I hope you will take the time to look at it. It's very extensive. And again, I really appreciate the departments and my staff for helping pull this together.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? So not knowing that Katrina Bartley was going to come forward this morning, I did note the amnesty program and and that started November 1st, 2023 and runs to November 1st, 2024, and I would like to bring back something for the board to consider potentially on consent to just extend it to the end of the year, December 31st, 2024, do one final outreach, push out into the community, encouraging people to come forward just because it has been almost a year already. We've had a I feel like we've had a lot of success in bringing people into planning and building to get their buildings permitted. And I'm not sure if the department has any feedback about if that would impact them or if a an additional month or two might seem okay to get that information out there to the public.
Thank you, Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. I we don't have any concerns about potential extension to the end of the year. I think it'll give an opportunity to, again, like you said, do additional outreach just so folks know that the program is still available. We've seen about a 50% success rate at this point, and that could go up. So and with the original amnesty program that was created by resolution of the board, so we would want to work if the board does direct us to do that, we'd work with county council's office and to do a resolution extending the program.
Okay. I'm not seeing any board members tell me not to do that, so I'll work with the team to bring that forward and we'll move. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? I have no one in the room and I have no hands raised online, so I will move on to item. There is no update for legislative platform for H, so we're on to item four I, Supervisors Reports Regarding Board Special Assignment Standing and Ad hoc Committee Meetings. Are there any supervisors that wish to provide a report at this time? Supervisor McGordy, let's start with you.
CEO Antle and I attended the annual RCRC meeting in fortunately in Sonoma County. We didn't have to travel very far as held in Warner Park, and it's always uplifting to get together and they had a very good educational program. And also a special presentation about two cities that were affected by tsunamis. One of them, if I can say it right, is Rikozan Taata in Japan, about sixty miles north of of Tokyo on on their east coast. It was heavily damaged, a very, very sad story of of how fifty-foot wave came in and not everyone was able to get out of the way. And and the mayor was there at the presentation and he talked about he will be haunted for the rest of his life because he had to make a decision. Should I go find my wife and get her out of harm's way, or should I take care of the city? And he had to make a choice and he chose the city because he was trying to, in a very Japanese way, I think, honor his his role. And so he barely made it himself. He climbed to the top of a three-story building and there were pictures of how the water came crashing around him and, you know, he easily could have been lost. And the his wife unfortunately was killed. His sons made it to safety, so it's something that was very, very sad to hear about. But two years later, a boat washes up on the shore in Crescent City. And it's called the Kamona, and it was taken on as a project for the high school to clean up. They they were able to figure out where it came from, and the way they did it was really cool. It had a registration number, but they went to social media in Japan and said, anybody missing a boat? And it turned out the boat was a fishing boat that came from the high school in in Rikozan Taata. And they started an exchange program between the students. And and here it is. This event, I think, was it 2014 when it happened? Ten years later, there's an exchange program between the two cities. And Crescent City, of course, being the it's ironic because it's an American city that probably has suffered the most damage from tsunamis in United States. And the we had kind of as part of the annual auction. We had an auction specifically for the the program. There's a foundation that exists for it, and I guess over $25,000 was raised in the evening to support the program of exchanging students. It's a really great story, really great story about how two communities are attached by a series of events and have formed a friendship. So I really enjoyed hearing about that. We submitted our basket to auction featuring a stay in the weekend in Mendocino County with multiple activities and raised sixteen hundred dollars for the auction fund that goes to charities of the chair's choice. And the chair is Chris Lopez of Monterey, and and one of the places that he is going to send money to is a very interesting program called Rancho Cielo. And this crusty old judge in Monterey County was tired of sending kids to to kind of California Youth Authority, and he said, can't we do something else? And they started basically a trade school that gives kids a chance of learning a skill because he recognizes not everyone wants to go to college. So they they have a broad array of activities. They're ranging from a pretty serious culinary academy to to car mechanics and and bodywork. And even now, they're they're working on aviation technology associated with drones. So, you know, pleased to see funds from our county supporting such a great program. And and thanks to the Mendocino Wine Growers and Visit Mendocino for supporting our basket, our offering. So tomorrow, John and I are going to be meeting with the General Government Committee to talk about drought emergency planning, and I'm looking forward to that discussion because it's something that leaving my position on we still have a lot of needs in the area of of water security, and it's going to be very important that the study get finished well. I'm looking forward for the input for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hasek.
Well, thank you Supervisor McGordy for sharing that about the General Government Committee meeting tomorrow because I was going to report on that too, to make sure that people are aware that EKI, the Environment and Water Incorporated, are going to do the Mendocino County Drought Resilience Plan Development and Drought Task Force Participation Project. That's all part of the SB 552, you know, and our responsibility and the requirements that we have to do to meet the drought requirement. You know, make sure we're still dealing with drought issues because it's just one season away, always. I'd just like to tell the board about some of the conversations I've had and some planning that we're doing. Next year, I'll be the chair. And so we've been working with the I've been working with the CEO and county council on developing a two-day workshop in January. And this is in, you know, we've been talking with other counties like Nevada County and Sonoma County about what they're doing as far as, you know, envisioning and setting the goals and strategic planning for the year coming up. And so they've been doing some of these workshops, like Nevada County does three days. I think Sonoma County does two. But they've been doing it for ten, twenty years, and they all think that it's very beneficial. So I'm proposing that we do that in January. You know, with this, it will be an educational component for the supervisors. Let's see, we'll be dealing some of the issues that we've talked about dealing with, our homelessness, public safety, decorum, our fiscal situation, and then also a part where the state of each district. And so each supervisor would give a report on what they think are the big concerns or what what they want to highlight in their district. So we're all kind of working from shared knowledge base and and so this will be in mid-January. We're also looking at the code of ethics and and just dealing with some of these issues so that we're all on board and we can kind of set the agenda for the year. There won't be any action items on these this two-day workshop, but you know, if there are things that come out of the workshop, they'll be brought in subsequent meetings to deal with. So we're looking for this. Because we do have two new supervisors coming on board, and I think this is a good time to do something different. So anyway, I'm just giving you a heads up on that.
I just quite real quick comment on that. I think that's a brilliant idea, and it's it also fits well into strategic planning because then you can take a look at, okay, what are our real priorities? And let's put our money where our mouth is. And and then it also kind of lowers the load a little bit on staff in terms of anticipating what the supervisors want to get accomplished in the coming year.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Jordy.
I just want to thank county staff for attending two committee meetings last week. Director Crogg attended and and made a nice presentation on what the county is doing to prepare for and plan for climate change in Mendocino County. And it was a meeting, committee meeting organized by the Grassroots Institute. There were about seventy-plus members of the public there. Also, there were presentations from City of Point Rena, City of Fort Bragg, and Mendocino Council Governments. Supervisor Williams and myself were the two supervisors because it was critically focused on on the coast. And then again, the committee meeting of the Friends of the Fort Bragg Library, which met last week to just discuss their proposal, their concept for developing a on their own piece of property, a new standalone building that could later be integrated with the existing county library in Fort Bragg, using their own funds on their own property. And I want to appreciate Tim Hallman and Doug Anderson from General Services for participating in that meeting, as well as Barb Chapman from the Library Department.
Thank you. Perhaps Director Crogg can email the presentation to the board because I did see that it was happening and noted there were already two supervisors and didn't attend, but I'm sure it was interesting and would be useful information for us to have.
If I may, Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. So it's a recorded actual presentation that was done, so I can find that link and send it to you. It's from the Grassroots Institute.
Great. Thank you so much. Supervisor Williams?
I've received outreach from the members of the public about the county's investment philosophy, not matching our actual investments. And I'm planning to meet with Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Sarah Pierce to get a better understanding of if there's flexibility to actually follow the philosophy or if we're blocked by available investment pools.
Thank you. Over the weekend, I attended the Critter Carnival at the Inland Humane Society, and I just want to thank them for all of the work that they do and in cooperation with our animal shelter, trying to make sure that pets find homes to go to. I also really had a very great experience working with some businesses that have been affected by homeless encampments on the Masonite Road at North State Street. And those businesses were incredibly supportive and helpful as I worked to clean up an encampment that had been underneath the county right of way on North State Street, but also affects and impacts those surrounding businesses. So I'd like to thank the the folks from Royzer, the folks from MRC, the folks from Mindomil, and also the volunteers that came from the A-Space, which is an alcohol anonymous and narcotics anonymous place where folks have meetings and they came and they really helped me clean that site up, as well as Greta from the Willett City Council came and helped me clean that site up. And we're trying to make some plans to make sure that it doesn't get repopulated and doesn't have additional trash down there. I think, you know, this is something that as a supervisor, before I was a supervisor, I was trying to tackle and will continue to try to figure out how we can come up with a solution as a community to deal with this issue because it really is impactful and harmful for our environment. This Saturday at 8:30 a.m. is the annual Russian River Cleanup. And gratefully, over the years, this project started as an actual flow down the Russian River where people cleaned up. And there tends to be a lot less trash in the Russian River these days. So it's more focused now on a streets to creeks campaign, and sometimes I call that litter happens. Something flies out of your car window or out of the back of a pickup truck, and it's more focused on how all of the creeks and streams lead to the river, which leads to the ocean and really is a great cleanup for families to be involved in. So they're going to meet at 8:30 a.m. at Low Gap Park and go out to different various sites from there. So I would encourage people to attend that. There are no members of the public to comment on this, and I have no members of on Zoom to comment on supervisors' reports. So this time, we will adjourn to closed session to hear item six A. I would like to make sure that there are no members of public comment in the room for item six A and that there are no members on Zoom for item six A. I have no hands raised and no members in the room. We will reconvene no sooner than 12:30 p.m.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in baby land. And when you're in baby world, you're you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping you you know that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted no las dijo y todo fue como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child and her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendoready.org. On the Know Your Hazards page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendoready.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendoready.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendoready.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, being, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque pues nosotros nunca, es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do and if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and being, everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me even though I was not a first-time mom. I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be, be very lonely and having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad y en nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willetts y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras, y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia de conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos, así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien y que las familias estén bien significan niños felices, niños sanos, y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I can go at my own pace and that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom, so it was very, it was very interesting and helpful. Very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know, that's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm gonna be with you guys for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her, she's gonna be with us for five years.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así como que ya nos presentamos formalmente y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too, and Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, 'cause she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step, like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know, they've got some great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera, ya sí, ya quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él, de quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar. En cosas también, no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful, she's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos, entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step, like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism, so we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá, cómo educar a un hijo y pues nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do and if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like, they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely and having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her and I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need, you get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad y en nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos, entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás, entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
desconoce.
No conoce claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo y muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité porque ha sido nuestra casa, a veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque, Gabby llega, como hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo, a veces ellas lo evalúa cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos, así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien y que las familias estén bien significan niños felices, niños sanos y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace and that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom, so it was very, it was very interesting and helpful. Very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and... because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know? That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know. I'm gonna be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's gonna be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy, como que el ambiente era muy familiar. Entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something. And she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit mendoready.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, mendoready.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit mendoready.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor, because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Y pues es algo bien, porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable. And I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, "Yeah, this is, this is going great."
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at, for every parent. And also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
Thing I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage, because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggested, I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know? They got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, sí, ya quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. And everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él, de quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas bien también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more elated and thankful, because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Y pues es algo bien, porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros, porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles, cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa.
Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful, she's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación, que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa, que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage, because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendoready.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendoready.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendoready.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendoready.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support, more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it, because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros, porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles, cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid?
We come from a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá, cómo educar a un hijo. Porque nosotros nunca, es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom. I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. She's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you. Especially for first-time parents, it can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that any...
And she's like, you know what, Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway, you know? You get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa, porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Sí, pues es algo, un bonito programa, porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa, porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación, que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en... que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no-
desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo y muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto. De dónde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, como hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras, y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful. Very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, "Will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?"
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know, that's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know. I'm gonna be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's gonna be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy, como que el ambiente era muy familiar. Entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too, and Sparrow really enjoyed it. Yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now is your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, "Yeah, this is, this is going great."
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless. And she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really wanna mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggested, I would say, "Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. There's some perks, you know. They've got some great resources."
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, ah, sí, ya quiero tener. Entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas lindas también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío, por decir algo no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío, por decir algo no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food- you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque pues nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you. Especially for first-time parents, it can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información. Y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha tendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres. Pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabi es una persona muy cercana a nosotros. Es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar pero lo veo de la misma forma. Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
Desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabi llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know. That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know. I'm going to be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's going to be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were going to be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were going to do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me. I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted no las dijo y todo fue como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless. And she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child and her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggested, I would say, give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know. They've got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. Quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar. En cosas lindas también, no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted no las dijo y todo fue como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabi a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's... because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today. Visit our website. Get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo. Porque nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like, they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college. See if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros. Es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí. Pues los han ayudado, como este programa, los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como, qué actividades hacer con Maximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Cobelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando no más podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's, puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Maximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love. And it's just natural, you know. That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm gonna be with you guys for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her. She's gonna be with us for five years.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar. Entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something, and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire, and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program, and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me. I'm a... I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby. You know, when we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable. And I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, yeah, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent, and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless. And she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her. She's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always OK to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know. Tienen muchos recursos.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visita a casa.
Me di cuenta de que mi vida iba a cambiar dramáticamente de maneras que no sabía o entendía o incluso comprendía. Iba a tener que realmente ir al agujero y ser responsable y ajustarme a muchas cosas de manera diferente.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, sí, ya quiero tenerla. Entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
Cuando comenzamos el programa, mi hija tenía unos tres meses y mi hija tiene 22 meses ahora. Algo que amo de mi hijo, que está saludable, feliz. Ella sabe que se ha cuidado y amado. Esas son algunas de las cosas que quería asegurarme que tenía y tiene.
Estoy feliz hoy con mi hija. Es la mejor cosa de mi vida y estoy feliz de despertar y verla. Todo lo que hago, lo hago por ella.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma que quizás yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar. Cosas lindas también, no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
Estaba más emocionado y agradecido porque durante tres meses estaba en el país del bebé. Y cuando estás en el mundo del bebé, estás solo en el pantano y esperas que seas sólido en las maneras en que puedes ser sólido.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted no las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
Mi experiencia ha sido nada más que positiva. Jeanette ha sido maravillosa, está en el tiempo. Ella me dice si van a haber cambios en el horario.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Todavía siento el desafío de ser madre ahora en el mundo de hoy inmenso. Creo que necesita apoyo.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
No sepa temer a tomar ese paso. Como, no sepa temer a obtener ayuda. Porque sabes, puede que pienses que sabes lo que estás haciendo, pero siempre está bien tener más apoyo y no lo hagas solo.
Inténtalo. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis. Estoy grata por haber aprovechado porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
¿Están preparados? Somos el oficio de servicios de emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse a salvo durante una emergencia. Parte de estar preparado es saber sus peligros y tomar precauciones adecuadas. Visita mendo ready.org. En la página de saber sus peligros, pueden encontrar peligros de donde trabajan, donde viven y dónde van a la escuela de sus hijos. En la página de planificación y preparación, encontrarán un modelo planificado. Es importante saber qué vas a hacer, qué vas a llevar con ti, cómo vas a comunicarte, dónde vas y cómo llegar.
Una gran forma de prepararse es cargar una bolsa de camino. Cada miembro de su familia debería tener su propia bolsa de camino. Visite nuestro sitio web, mendo ready.org, para obtener una lista de cosas que deberían estar en su bolsa de camino.
Juntar y organizar documentos importantes antes de una emergencia es una parte importante de la preparación. Así que visiten mendo ready.org hoy donde pueden encontrar una lista de documentos importantes que deberían tener preparadas cerca de su bolsa de camino en caso de que deba evacuar.
No todas las emergencias requieren que la gente evaya. Un kit de emergencia tendrá suministros para que se mantenga autodidacta durante 72 horas. Encuentren una lista de suministros para kits de desastre en nuestro sitio web, mendo ready.org.
Una comunidad preparada es una comunidad resiliente que recuperará más rápido de los desastres. Así que tomen algún tiempo hoy, visiten nuestro sitio web, se preparen para que puedan ser mendo ready.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visita a casa.
Creo que como padre ahora, estoy grata por el apoyo más que antes.
Fui a la forma que no sabía qué estaba haciendo. Estoy muy, muy grata por haberlo hecho porque realmente me está ayudando mucho.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Bueno, era una nueva mamá y no tenía experiencia cuidando a un bebé.
No hay un libro sobre cómo criar a un niño.
Vimos de mucha historia familiar de, sabes, drogas, violencia, alcoholismo. Así que no queríamos que nuestra hija experimentara nada de eso.
Pensé que un padre se supone que debe ser amoroso, nutrición, que debe estar ahí para su hijo, sabes, proveer comida, refugio, alegría. Y entrar, convertirse en padre para ella, no tenía idea de cómo proveer eso.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
Lo que creo que los padres deberían saber sobre el visitamiento a casa es que pueden aprender muchas cosas nuevas y consejos y trucos. Cómo cuidar al bebé y qué hacer. Y si estás, sabes, atrapado en una rutina y todo siendo monótono, les dan nuevos recursos y nuevas herramientas para manejar la familia.
Fue bueno tenerlos guiándome, aunque no fuese una primera madre, sentía como una primera.
Totalmente cambió mi mente con el tiempo. Tanta información que no tenía idea. Sabes, ella fue directa cuando me enseñaba esto y respondió a cualquier pregunta. Fue una experiencia realmente positiva.
Lo que creo que los padres podrían beneficiarse del programa es solo tener alguien aquí para ti, especialmente para los padres de primera vez. Puede ser muy isolante y puede ser muy solo. Y tener al visitante a casa cambia eso y se siente muy bien.
Para mí, tener un visitante a casa es como tener una segunda mamá ahí.
Mucha ha cambiado. Definitivamente soy más conocida cuidando a ella. Y sé que cada vez que necesito consejo o ayuda de alguien, puedo llamar a ella.
Es solo ese pequeño acento positivo de, hey, estoy notando algo. Sabes, busquemos una manera de cambiarlo. Y ella dice, sabes, Amanda, vamos a levantarte, te deshacerte y vamos a ver si puedes obtener tu licencia de conductor o ver si vas a la universidad, ver si podemos hacer algo para ti.
Es totalmente valioso. Como incluso si al principio estuvieras en la fosa, no te parece que haya un extraño que venga a tu casa y te enseñe sobre tu pequeño. Hazlo de todos modos, sabes. Obtienes la ayuda que necesitas, obtienes consejo profesional sobre cosas que tal vez no sabes de tu hijo. El hecho de que el programa no tenga costos o nada, es totalmente gratis, es fantástico.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres. Pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros. Es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado. Como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando no más podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Wellits y puede ser en el parque. Gavilla, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
Ella me hizo sentir que soy importante y puedo ir a mi propio ritmo. Y eso es todo lo que necesitas cuando te sientes como si no tienes a nadie.
Fue útil tener alguien ahí que me sostenga y me guíe y me dé cuenta de que esto es algo normal. Se sentía como si me estaba volviendo una nueva mamá. Así que fue muy interesante y útil, muy útil.
Sabes, había esa parte consciente de mí, como si me aceptaran aunque no soy perfecta.
Lo que más me gusta es que ella realmente escucha.
El apoyo que me da es especial porque ella lo hace con amor y es simplemente natural, sabes. Eso es todo lo que podría decir. Se siente como alguien que he conocido desde que era pequeña.
Dije a Jeanette, dije, Jeanette, debes estar conmigo durante cinco años. Jeanette dijo, sí, lo sé, voy a estar contigo durante cinco años. Eso fue cuando dije, bueno, supongo que puedo confiar en ella, ella va a estar contigo durante cinco años.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar. Entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Se sentía como si le importaba a Sparrow también. Y Sparrow realmente disfrutó. Ella sabía que cuando Gabby venía, íbamos a hacer algo o aprender algo y ella empezaría inmediatamente a excavar las maletas de Gabby para averiguar qué actividad íbamos a hacer.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Creo que la relación que hemos construido ha sido que ella es parte de la familia.
¿Están preparados? Somos el oficio de servicios de emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse a salvo durante una emergencia. Visita mendo ready.org. Es nuestro supermercado de emergencias. Pueden inscribirse para alertas de emergencia, encontrar su zona de evacuación preestablecida en nuestra mapa de emergencias actual y encontrar información sobre peligros y preparación.
Imagínense que se enfrentan a un desastre como un incendio.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixel and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the Home Visiting Program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, "Oh, this is nice." And now look at me. I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Because I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, "Yeah, this is going great."
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent. And also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless. And she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
Thing I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her. She's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, "Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know? They've got some great resources."
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the Home Visiting Program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, ah, sí, ya quiero tener. Entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupan la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had. And she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her. And everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar. En cosas raras también, no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa.
Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support. And don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the Home Visiting Programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque pues nosotros nunca es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre. What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me even though I was not a first-time mom. I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. She's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you. Especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, "Hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it." And she's like, "You know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college. See if we can start something for you."
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información. Y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres. Pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros. Es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado, como este programa, los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro.
Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Maximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know? That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know, I'm gonna be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's gonna be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a... I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Because I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, "Yeah, this is going great."
No reportable action, meeting adjourned.